There we go, excellent. Good evening Winchester, welcome to the December 11th Planning Board meeting.
I guess I should wait.
On our agenda today, we have a, well, we're already late, what do you know? We have a continuation of a hearing on the subdivision off of Highland Ave. That will be going on for an, we've scheduled an hour for that. And then we have a number of special permits. And then we're going to be talking about the planning board budget. And then we will be adjourning. So, the first order of business, I believe, is, unless we have anything else you want to comment on? It doesn't say planner's notes, but we usually give you a few moments to say something of import.
I think, I think we can get right into it, to be honest.
Okay, cool. So, why don't we open the hearing, or continue the hearing on Highland Ave? And I, why don't you bring us up to speed on what's happened?
Sure, so, there are some new things in your packet, that's at the table, that we just got today. You should have it right in front of you.
Oh.
So, there's a num, there are a number of things in here that, there's probably only one thing that you've seen in here, which is the, the Design Review Committee notes regarding Highland Ave from November 14th. So, these got sent a long time ago, right when they got written.
Mm-hmm.
But, printed those off. So, these are, what, one, two, three, four, five things related to Highland Ave subdivision. If you're looking at, it's this one with the town seal on the top, it's saying trees will be preserved, trees that will be preserved shown, should be shown on the clearing and grubbing plan. There's some relief related to the front setback, which wouldn't, we wouldn't talk about at the moment. It was recommended to move a proposed tree in the front yard closer to Highland Ave to create a defined tree canopy along the street. And a little bit on some, where the, where some specific bushes would be, and then a lighting plan. So, that's everything from Design Review. There's ba, there are basically three kind of talking points tonight that's, that, that are still needed to get flushed out. One is related to the drainage. And we'll get a little bit more of that from Beth when the time comes. But basically, VHB and the applicant have been conversing about potential options of, in order, in order to contain the water on the site and/or direct it to the stormwater infrastructure. So, the other, so, one is the drainage analysis. The other is the Homeowners Association document. That is a document that, this is, this was just an exchange of emails today. So, this, this had, this was from legal counsel that basically said that, that they, you know, they needed more than 18 hours to review the homeowners', the homeowners' association document. And that they will get back to, that counsel will get back to us within a few days in order, they're, I guess they had some, you can see this, they had some concerns related to some of the provisions that were located in the draft HOA given by the applicant. So, that's the second issue. We have drainage analysis, homeowners' association, and then even somewhat related to the drainage analysis is the money that's associated with paying VHB. So, there was, the contract and the scope for VHB to review this, to review the, all of the drainage was because this was a town, this was a town venture, you know, it was a joint venture between the town and the applicant. So, that's why we got an outside drainage consultant. The scope was pretty defined, I believe it was two reviews. But then throughout the process, it just ended up getting, there were, just ended up being more reviews that were necessary by VHB. So, they've been doing work and they, to put it bluntly, they, they need more money. So, that's one thing that we need, that, that's a kind of a minor thing. It's just something that we would, we would need to authorize, I mean, we would, we would have to authorize, at this point, it would be through 53G to make the applicant pay for the rest of that. And those are the kind of the three major conversations. Most of the work that has happened in the, in the past month, almost all of it is, I would say, 75% of it is minor, that they have agreed to. And maybe 20 to 25% have been kind of this back and forth where there, an option is given to the applicant by VHB, and then multiple options were, are given back from the applicant, and then it's just this constant conversation. So, because of that, they, they've gone through, they've gone through more hours. So, that's something that we will, we would need to talk about. The biggest thing at the moment, clearly, is the drainage analysis. That we've been still going, I mean, we have a, we, so, the VHB gave a memo today, and that's also in your packet, it was, this, it was given to me today at 5: something. Simply because that, I mean, there'd been backing, back and forth even today. So, that, that's where we are at the moment. The largest issue is, is, is finalizing some drainage infrastructure. Beth should speak to that first, I believe, that's, that's kind of the bigger issue. And then the other two issues with the homeowners' association and the money associated with the, with the increased amount of reviews are less important, but still important, but, but less important than the drainage infrastructure.
So, there's plans in these letters dated today, right?
Correct, they are dated today.
Where are these plans?
I was, I was hoping there'd be paper copies. Okay, so, they, I have them here, revised December 11th. They, I, I sent them to the board the second I got them.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess there are paper copies as well, but yes, you, we got them today.
And, and I just don't want to lose track of this stuff, because it's, I don't know, it's where I fall in this. It's this designer view stuff, which, the light fixtures, the trees that we want to have identified. I don't know if that's going to be in the news in the middle, but I just want to list these things that we're going to want to look at. The DRC recommended two street trees on Highland Ave. A mix of better buffer of evergreen trees along the north edge with the neighbors of others. And we want to make sure that we, if these lots get sold, that we end up retaining that buffer in the rear setbacks. So, I think that has to go somewhere in language we've got.
Well, if you're talking about landscaping, then yes, that would be in.
Landscaping's different.
Well, if you're, if you're talking about distant, if you're talking about distance between.
Well, if we're going to grant a reduction in the front setback.
We are not.
Oh, okay.
We can't.
Okay.
So, that was actually more directed to ZBA.
I see.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, then, the question's how to make sure that we retain the rear setback is, if this project's sold, that the lots maintain that rear setback.
We could, we could.
I don't want this just to go off into the ether.
Yeah, I mean, well, there, there, there could be a, there could be a condition that allows for more, but not, not, we could do a condition that doesn't require a waiver. Meaning, we can't say you have to have the, the front setback too small. But we could say is that you could have the rear setback be X, I believe.
Yeah, I don't think there's any, any, any reason that that would be a problem.
Well, before we vote, I want to make sure that's locked in, so, I don't know how we do that.
No, we'd have to craft that language.
We'd have to craft that language. And to be honest, I'm sitting here and I'm staring at a whole bunch of question marks.
Well, I, I, I think we should start with the drainage.
Let's start with the drainage.
I think Beth could give a quick recap, and we, we start there.
I mean, yeah, because I, yeah, let's start with the drainage and move directly then to the HOA, which I now know stands for Homeowners Association, not High Occupancy Aircraft.
(Laughter).
I'm like, what the heck is that?
We would be in big trouble if that's what we have.
HOA, what the heck's an HOA? Okay.
So, I'm not.
So, I could, I could bring up maybe the VHB memo.
Beth, have you seen these plans from today?
So, I have not seen.
This is the VHB memo.
This is what Luke sent out.
That's Luke just sent that at 5:11 or 5:20.
So, there's been a lot of back and forth in the past 48 hours about options for the drainage along Highland Ave. Our concern and VHB's concern, maybe if you just want to go to the drainage sheet.
Can we get those paper copies, please?
Yeah.
Craig, can we get those? My eyesight is not getting any better.
So.
It's really good.
I know, it's the place fixed.
I love chocolate.
The grading.
The ones with the colored copy?
Or is there multiple?
There's just one copy.
There's just one copy.
I have a half-size set if you want that.
I don't know if it's in this set, it might be a separate.
It's a grading plan, I don't know if it shows the most recent information.
I'm not sure how well.
This is the grading plan.
So, one of the concerns that VHB raised during their review was, so, as the, what happens today under very high flow conditions.
Sorry, just a second, it was the grading plan, and it's called C4.
If you could just zoom out a little bit. So, this, where's 22 Highland? This is the existing building for 22 Highland Ave. And the town has a head wall, I think is right here. So, under, what happens today is when the reservoir is high and we get a lot of rain, the Sawmill Brook, which is dry probably half the time and flows some, mostly little amount most of the time, but when there's runoff coming from, overtopping from North Reservoir, it gets much bigger. So, we get water that flows down. And under normal conditions, it goes into this, this is the head wall that, that's right here. And then there's a drainage pipe, a town-owned drainage pipe that goes through here and goes out into Highland Ave. There's a culvert under Highland Ave. This is 22 Highland here, it's hard to see. Under very high flow conditions, all that water can't go into the head wall, and so it backs up and it overtops and it flows through the 22 Highland Ave property. And it comes out somewhere down here, somewhere through here, and it flows down Highland Ave and ultimately across Highland Ave. So, the concern, and we've all seen that very high flow flooding condition over the years. The concern has always been, the town is doing some drainage improvements out here. We are mitigating for up to and including the 25-year storm event. So, anything above the 25-year storm event, there will still be some overtopping of this system. If we were to make improvements to include the 25, beyond the, up to the 100-year storm event, it was like a million-dollar project and involved drainage improvements all the way down to the Apportard River. So, the town, back in 2011, 2012, when we had this original study done, made the decision to do the, you know, the slightly lower class, little bit less, you know, there's still some impacts during these very large storm events. So, like a 50- and 100-year storm event, you could still potentially see, depending on where the reservoir is to start with. So, we're talking about those level of storm events here. So, the applicant has installed like a 15-inch drain pipe that goes here and ties into the town's drainage system. But for the 25-year storm event, there'll be no flooding of the road. But once we get past that, it'll, we'll have some overtopping of this drain pipe. And so, what we've been working with, with the applicant is figuring out where that flow can go, so that it doesn't, our concern was, as they had it originally designed, that it was going to flow down the road and it was going to go, potentially go across the street and impact the houses across the street on Highland Ave. So, there's been a lot of back and forth over the past, like I said, 48 hours about how to design that. So, we've basically come up with kind of a low point in the road here, where when it gets high enough, it will overtop and flow through the corner of this Lot 1, across the, across the sidewalk into a swale that's been graded out here in the green, the grass strip. And that swale won't contain the full 100-year flows, but I think it's reasonable to expect some flooding of Highland Ave during 100-year storm events. So, we feel, VHB and I feel like this is an adequate solution. And then we've, the applicant has added some additional small berm on the opposite side of the street to keep those flows from crossing into those, those properties.
On the opposite side of the street, is there, I can't remember, is there a sidewalk? Or is it just the right way?
Yeah, so there's a grass strip and a sidewalk on both. There's a, there's grass strip and sidewalk on both sides of Highland Ave in this area.
So, the berm would be where?
In the grass strip. It's just kind of a little hump in the, raising the grass a little bit. So, we're recommending, VHB's recommending, the applicant installed new curb in this area to help with that, and then this swale. And so, I haven't, I haven't seen like the final plan set with this information. So, I haven't looked at this exact plan. I think there's been, you know, snippets that have been circulated by the applicant, and VHB has looked at it, but we haven't seen the full plan set like you have on your table now, so. So, that's kind of where we stand with the drainage, VHB, I think in the letter, that they issued at 5:30 tonight. They had talked to the applicant late afternoon today and were satisfied with the design that had been proposed.
I know, because I gotta say, you know, because I sort of live up in that general neck of the woods. And, and I have to tell you, I mean, it does concern me, because the population up there is so much denser than it used to be.
Yeah.
I mean, there's many more homes.
So, so, there's no question that, that the road, that there's still going to continue to be water flowing in the road, whether this development goes forward or not, like, that's not, this development has nothing to do with that. What we're trying to make sure is that we don't push that water across the street to those houses on the other side of Highland Ave, that we keep it.
I'm with you.
Kind of where it has always gone today.
But 25, those of us who've remembered Winchester High School getting shut down for months after 100 years, right? And then there were like three, I don't know, every, was, how many years separated the two times it was shut down? But I know 25 might sound reasonable.
Right, so that it is contained for the 25-year storm.
Right, right, no, I hear you.
So, it's above that, so, I mean, it's, it's a.
We're going to see a lot of flooding.
So, that's a decision that was made irrespective of this project by the town many years ago in terms of how we were going to.
The town, was that the planning board?
No, it's town manager, engineering, DPW.
But why?
Well, the, the project's already been funded at Fall Town Meeting this year, so, we're sort of.
Yep.
Talked with 25-year, oh, golly.
So, I'm trying to, in 20 seconds, wind my way through this VHB memorandum, which is impossible.
Right.
And I'm just going to skip right to the end, because I'm ignorant of a few of the things that the planning board is being asked to consider. In particular, where it says, "We respectfully defer to the planning for determination on this item," and I have no idea what this item actually means.
Which number are you looking at?
So, let's look at comment number.
It's at the last page, right?
Yeah, we're on the last page. Let's go to comment number 14. "Applicants Request For Relief From TSS Removal Requirements." Can you define what that is?
So, there's a small section of the roadway, there's a catch basin at the very end of the road near Lot 1.
Okay, thank you.
It's actually.
Oh, here, right?
No, the, in the road, further up, yeah. Yeah, right there. So, there's a portion of the drainage, and actually, this may have sort of been addressed by the regrading that had to be done for this swale, but there was a portion, a small portion of their road that was discharging into Highland Ave without, like, discharging it into a deep sum catch basin, which is kind of part of the whole mass stormwater policy. So, we all felt like it was such a small area that it was, we weren't concerned with that small amount that was running off of their site into the town's road.
So, what does TSS stand for?
TSS is Total Suspended Solids. So, the, the Mass Stormwater Handbook has an 80% TSS removal requirement, which they are meeting for the rest of the site. It's just that very small portion at the end of the road that is not meeting that standard.
Okay, and so, you agree with VHB's taking no exception?
Yeah, we were, again, we've discussed all of these comments pretty much with VHB over the past month or so, and we were, we weren't concerned with that, with everyone.
Okay. So the ConCom is hopefully going to chime in on number thirty-one. I have no idea what NAVD nineteen eighty-eight is as a plan datum. And we're supposed to be, they're deferring to us.
Yeah, and that's what the standard is that we use, is the, it's the vertical datum by which they do the survey.
And why is this even coming in as a comment?
I think there might be something written in one of the regulations, you'd have to go back in their comment, to their original comment. But I think there's something written that.
The wetlands bylaw of this potentially, or?
Yeah, that, the town of Winchester also has a datum, which at this point is, nobody uses. Everybody uses the NAVD eighty-eight, because that's the datum that the FEMA maps are based on.
So a planned datum is a fiducial elevation?
Right, so it's like how you determine zero based on, and where all your grading comes from. So there's like a five point two seven foot difference, I think, between NAVD eighty-eight and the town of Winchester datum.
As long as we get all distances relatively correct, that's all I care about?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we as a standard, and I don't know where that was written, but it should be changed, because we as a standard no longer use the town of Winchester datum. We always use NAVD eighty-eight, because that's what the FEMA maps are based on, so.
Okay.
So the Lot One of the subdivision, I'm assuming is still called Lot One, although it's not titled on this. We are worried about, on the other side of Highland, those houses. And we're worried about down, what about that, the corner of that house?
So the, the grades are such that the, the water that flows to that property won't impact the house.
If the grades are done right.
Right, I mean, if they're, if they're done according to what's shown on the plan, yeah. And the wall, the other concern was the impact of the wall. And I think the way it's graded is that we all feel comfortable that.
So once that's sold and someone lives there, how do you make sure that it stays graded the way that you need it to?
Well, there is a drainage easement through that property, through that portion. I think it covers that section, so.
And they would know that when they bought the property?
Well, they will know that there's a drainage easement. But there could be some language added either to the plan or to the drainage easement that says that they can't modify the grades in that area, that's a good point.
Yeah, I think that would, I think that would be a very good idea, because, you know, I don't expect a homeowner necessarily to be able to come in and digest that. I mean, I happen to be married to an engineer, so I know he would get it.
Sure.
But I can think that a lot of other people who are non-professionals.
But I didn't know if it was even written anywhere when you buy the property.
No, that's a good point, that it, you're right, it should be included in something.
Does this go into the homeowners association?
Certainly, yeah.
Just no regrading of any areas that are associated with any drainage easement, but?
Well, we'd have to look at the, I think, is that the drainage easement that's shown on there?
We just have to make sure that the description is.
We need to come up with some language about no regrading of that front area.
So when you say that there's no impact to the house, how close to the house does the water actually get? And if we're looking at a fifty or a hundred year flood, are we going to get water in their basement?
I defer to the, to the applicant and we, I haven't done that level of analysis. I defer to the applicant, I mean, there's no, the house doesn't have to be built the way it's shown here, right? You guys aren't approving the location of the houses as part of this.
Right, but we are approving the concept of having houses that aren't affected by fifty year.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's an analysis you haven't done. Why don't we, why don't we finish up with the town engineer first? Because we've got our expertise in front of us. You know, again, trying to parse this thing, I believe I understood you to say that you are okay with the current plan? And VHB is as well?
VHB reviewed it. I did not review the most final plan this afternoon because I was in a meeting, but VHB reviewed it and we've discussed at length over the past few days. So I think we were all on the same page as to where we wanted to go.
Have you discussed this, but Mike, I'm concerned that the final plan that arrived this afternoon, I want to make sure there are no substantive changes which haven't been reviewed. So what you've discussed over the last several days is that encompassed by the final plan which we have before us?
So, again, I was in meetings all afternoon. I did not review the final plan that came in at four PM. VHB reviewed it and issued this letter at five thirty tonight.
Right, so you haven't seen the final plan, so you can't comment on anything other than?
The final plan was, yes, I have not reviewed it myself. I'm comfortable that VHB has reviewed it and it's in line with what we were asking to be done. And we, you know, so.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just trying to get my, my ducks in a row. I shouldn't say ducks when we talk about flooding.
No, we're all looking at brand new stuff and asking for opinions on things that we haven't even really had time to sit and look at, which is, I don't think the right way to make a decision in any way. But I do think it's, get an update on where we stand on everything from that, where we stand on the items you pointed out from design review, that process, if that is acceptable to the planning board at this point, because, I got, I mean.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
Just go through on an update on where everything is and go to the hearing and postpone it to the next. We have time to continue it.
Yeah, I mean, I think what makes, what makes sense is for the applicant to explain everything that's changed in these plans as opposed to the ones that we saw last month. I think that's a good exercise to go through. The HOA, I mean, legal counsel is essentially saying, "We would love to review it, we need time to review it."
I want to see it as well to make sure that, for instance, we get the language that Heather discussed about maintaining grading in that.
The devil is in the details and that's what a lot of it is.
And I note that there was one of the things I caught looking at the subdivisions about, you know, who, who is going to deal with the, the storm management? And to make sure there was money in the kitty to pay for it. And I want to make sure that's in the HOA as well.
Yeah, that should be a condition.
Yeah, so shall we just move on to the HOA, which is, I think, next on your list of important things?
Yeah, I think it's up to the board on when you would want, like I said, the applicant to come and explain the changes that have been, I mean, to explain the changes. Because with this plan set, it's not, not every page has been changed, but I think it'd be a good exercise to go through all the things that were changed.
No, but even the things that are changed are bubbled. Usually when you resubmit a new, you bubble everything that's been changed, so.
So you can easily, easily.
You can have them go through it, but at the same time, we have this, the ginormous set. And we have it up there and I don't think it's, for me to go through it, the way that I would like to go through it, it's not fair to the planning board to sit and wait for me to go sit and flip through all these big pages.
Agreed. What I'm saying is, I'm talking about three to five minutes of explaining what the work that has been done outside of the drainage, which is.
Just my expectations of where I'm standing, just to be very clear.
I think if we, if we move through the three items you discussed and then we bring the applicant forward to give an impromptu presentation on what's changed.
It'll move us forward.
That, yeah, so I think, I think if there are no more questions on the drainage, until we've had a chance to review these more, I think we can ask Beth to step away.
Thank you, Beth.
I need to, sorry, I'd like to wrap this up, but I'm suddenly, maybe I've been missing an action here, but focusing on the properties across Highland Avenue and the potential impact on them. I'm not sure what's going on with their, you're talking about a buffer, that sounds good, maybe it's all fine. But I don't, I would love to just see a larger plan that shows me where the houses are across the street and what's the, I mean, I don't know if I would do very well with the topo anyway, but at least have somebody interpret, if it spills over the little buffer that's going to be on the edge of the grass, we get the hundred year storm, what's, where's, what's happening and where are the houses located?
What's being proposed prevents it, prevents that from happening, even in the hundred year storm.
And who maintains that bump?
It'll just be a grast, small berm.
And on whose property is this?
In the town.
It would be on the grass strip.
Right away across the street.
Within the right of way, so not.
So the swale, so on the, on the subdivision side, there's a small swale being proposed in the grass strip. And on the opposite side of Highland, they're just small.
I know it's, it's our right of way, but have the owners been notified of this?
No, I mean, it's the town property.
Because they're the ones who are really realistically going to be maintaining it. The town doesn't go around and mow them.
It's a grast swale, I mean, it's a grast berm, so once it's, you know, graded and.
Planning board said, you know, I just would be, whoa, wait a minute, folks. They do perceive it as, as their, I know, legally no issues, but really just suddenly have this as part of our agreement that they're, they're going to get these little bumps in front. And by the way, don't go out there and start whatever planting daylilies and suddenly it's gone down four more inches. Maybe the daylilies would help, I don't know. But it just strikes me as something where it's kind of, that berm is going to be doing a really important job.
And they don't know it.
And how tall is this, I have no idea, how big is this swale?
I, I think it was.
No criticism, by the way, it's just like, I feel like I'm representing a community.
Okay, well, when Craig comes forward, we'll ask him that question. Okay, so enough at the moment for stormwater management. Let's move on to the protective covenant.
But why are we talking about this if we haven't seen it?
Right, so, so what I was going to say was, what I was going to say was that.
I just want to get an update on what the story is.
Sure, so I don't have, so in the email, Art basically just said, "I have some issues with some of the provisions of the HOA. I will give you a more fully, or full-blown review, you know, soon." So to be honest, I don't even, I don't even know what his issues are with the HOA.
That's okay, we don't expect you to know.
Okay, the key, the key thing here is, is the last part and the last bit from Art, which says, "I'll leave it to the board whether to grant subdivision approval conditioned on execution of a satisfactory HOA document." So if, if the board is okay trusting Art without seeing it, then he can go forward, else, else.
Well, that's not it, that's not the point. I mean, I think the real point is that we have the responsibility for basically approving it, you know, so that's, that's what we're supposed to be doing, yes?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So, you know, and I think that if we don't have a clear idea of what's cooking, I think that's a real problem.
Oh, yeah.
Art doesn't even know what we, where we stand on anything.
Yeah, and he doesn't, you know.
I'm merely saying that, you know, we do have the option of trusting Art, which we often, of course, do.
It's not a trusting, it's not a trusting thing. I mean, basically what he's saying is that legally, we could, we could have a decision tonight with one of the many conditions being approval conditioned upon the execution of a satisfactory HOA document.
Right.
Or what he's, so that's legally possible. What he's also saying by, by saying this, what he's also saying is that if we wait a couple of, if he, he can review it and then we can, we can see exactly what it is and vote the whole thing in as part of, you know, not as a condition, but just say, the condition would be, here's the HOA.
Done is done, all right.
Right.
Can we have him at our next meeting?
Our next meeting has to be scheduled.
We do, yeah.
Well, so our next meeting is on Monday, the seventeenth. I don't know if he's available.
And I don't know that we actually have time on the agenda for Art.
Right.
No, I mean for, you know, present during this.
Just talking about this, I mean.
I'm talking about this too.
Speaking of trust, I guess my feeling is, I would like him to be doing it before we approve it. I do trust him actually a lot. If he's comfortable with it, then I'll feel that I'm.
Yeah, that was not the issue.
Yeah, I, I, I used the wrong word, I will take the word back.
If we were to move this to our, and I'm, by the way, hoping to get, we got options for January, but we don't have a commitment finally. I guess the eighth is a firm date and after that it's options, but.
Well, the eighth is, so, so the eighth is the last day that we can render a decision.
January.
January eighth.
Okay.
Well, except that if we were to say, well, we deny if we don't have everything in line, so it's not that.
No, I'm just saying a decision, so our night, we have a ninety, yeah, yeah. Well, no, the only way we could get an extension is if the applicant would agree to that.
Exactly, but that is very common and I've certainly lived through many.
But, but yeah, it happens to be, so January eighth is the ninety day mark from the time of application, which means we have to have not a, not a, not a decision filed, a decision rendered. So we need to have a vote on, the eighth is the drop dead date.
You keep saying that, unless the applicant wishes to extend.
Correct.
Right, and we have the opportunity to say, this is not finished, it's done.
We, we do, why don't, why don't we, we're going to get to that discussion, I think, in a bit. So why don't we, why don't we move forward? And, I mean, I'm hoping we will get to that discussion in the next fifteen minutes. So, so we, we don't have anything really to say on the HOA because no one's seen it.
Deferring to Art at the moment.
I think there's consensus that we want to see it.
Yeah, I think, I think the mood of the board is that we want to see it.
Approved by, recommended by Art.
Before, in anyways, just to make sure that the things that we think are important are in there. So there's that on the HOA, and then the last thing.
Oh, yeah, was it, the last thing on the HOA was that typically, so Beth and I looked at previous subdivisions and usually the HOA is baked already. It's not usually a condition based upon the subject of a, of a written HOA. It's, it's, here's the, the condition is, look at exhibit A, here's the homeowners association agreement, sorry.
Correct, thank you.
So that would be what's typical of what the board has done in the past.
Yeah.
I would, okay, yes. So there's that. And then the last thing that I believe that you said we were, we should look at would be the fifty, extension of the fifty-three G?
Yeah, so I'm, Beth, I'm not sure exactly how much money, it was somewhere in the five to six range in terms of how much money.
I thought it would give you a number.
Yeah, I can look at that real quick.
Is this for services already rendered?
Already done, yes.
So we don't anticipate any further work from VHB?
I think at this point, we're finally okay.
Yeah, unless the board has concerns with what has been.
Okay, but as.
Except for as discussed, yeah.
Okay.
I think what planner that came out today would be their final review.
Okay.
So I can obviously get, you know, a very specific number. We, there could be a vote, I don't think there has, I don't think the vote needs to specifically say exactly how much money. I think it would be to cover the cost, it would be to cover the cost of services already rendered.
Why wouldn't they have continued working if they'd exceeded their contract amount?
This is a good question.
Because they like doing business with the town.
Well, yeah, one, one, the work needed to be done. They prob, you know, they probably should have been more forthcoming with their schedule in terms of their, where they were in terms of the money. But the scope was very clear in terms of the original scope, in terms of how much review they were supposed to be doing. And in the past two weeks, there's been significant work.
If there's scope creep, usually you flag that and ask for more money because you.
You are correct, you are right, you are, I can't, I, I can't defend it.
Well, you can't explain it.
Yeah, I mean, I cannot explain why, why, why they didn't say, "We have reached it, we're not doing any more work until we are authorized to have more money."
Yeah, I mean.
I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't explain why they didn't do that.
Anyway, we shouldn't be in this position with our fifty-three G money, but that's.
Well, it's not our, I mean, we, I mean, it's not.
It's something that in the future, I think we would be more comfortable if it didn't happen.
Oh, completely, this was, I didn't.
But I'm not saying VHB didn't do.
The work needed to get done, it was, it was that they didn't alert us fast enough. The thing is, at that time, it's not like the, we didn't have a, it's not like the board could have even voted the money at the time based upon our, our meeting schedule. Meaning a lot of work happened in a very condensed amount of time.
Right, but the board, yeah, so in the future, let's try to make sure the board is notified so that the contractor doesn't work beyond their budget, so that we.
Yeah, if there's scope creep, they would say, "We need to stop work." And then we wait for another planning board meeting and then we would get approved.
I agree one hundred percent.
But I think you're saying it was so rushed, that's forcing us to talk about it tonight, you know what I mean? Like they didn't have to do that work this week if we hadn't voted to give them more money.
Which always makes me nervous, frankly, you know.
I'm, you know, personally, I'm glad they did the work. It shows that they have, you know, they want to do the job. But in terms of the controls issue, I'm, I am concerned.
Beth and I were concerned as well.
Yeah, so I, I, I think we should take a vote on whatever the wording should be in terms of authorizing a, I don't know what the wording should be. Can you come up with the right wording?
It would be to use fifty-three G in order to cover the cost, to make the applicant pay to cover the costs of the work that was, was performed as part of the subdivision review. I mean, it's kind of this weird situation where because there was a lot of this back and forth, it caused more money to be spent.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, basically, basically what, look, this is basically what happened is engineering in VHB. I mean, I mean, basic, basically what, look, this is basically what happened is, uh engineering in VHB had a number of ideas and recommendations. Um the applicant took those in and came up with um other options that could satisfy the same requirements. And then VHB had to review those multiple options to see whether or not they actually did do what, what the applicant said.
What they were purporting.
So it was this, I wouldn't say cat and mouse, it was, it was more of just, um in order to get the work done, there nee, I mean, there needed, you know, you either agree to what VHB says or you, or you don't, and that's, that's what, that's what happened. VHB easily could have just said, like Heather said, VHB is like, we're not doing this anymore, and they could have just stopped it immediately. They, for whatever reason, didn't, didn't wanna be aggressive in that way and, and didn't do that. I think it was a mistake. Beth and I agreed that it was, it should have been a little more forthright.
VHB is actually a real person, so I hope you have that conversation.
Yeah, no, I talked with him specifically and said that this was not really what we had anticipated. Um meaning that, sure, more work needs to happen, that's fine, but it's more of like, here's the bill, and we're like.
Doesn't work this-
Yeah.
Yeah, usually like, okay, we've got our number of hours.
I, like I said, you're, you're a hundred percent.
Or it looks like, or it looks like we're gonna blow through our hours.
So I think we've all, we've all indicated our disapproval of what's happened, so. Um now we have to vote to approve fifty-three G funds to cover the um, you over, you had really good money.
Review, just a review.
Approve fifty, approve fifty-three G funds to cover the cost of services rendered.
Uh the service which have already been, these are not new services.
Right, to cover the costs of um.
Review.
The cost of uh review that-
Additional review time?
Additional review that has already happened.
That, yeah, that's the key. I wanna make sure it says.
Already occurred.
Additional review that has already happened um over and above, well, is there-
Over and above the initial contract?
Yeah. Is over and above not redundant?
Yes.
Yeah.
Maybe a little bit.
The initial-
The, the cost of additional reviews that have already happened outside of the original scope.
Yep.
Okay, you've got that?
Yep.
Okay, so um, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Betsy's seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we've got five not on that.
Yep.
Okay, so that was, I think, all we have to talk about in terms of the list.
Right, so the, so the HOA, we're basically waiting for Art.
Yeah.
Um and I, I still would like the applicant to explain what has happened since the last meeting.
Yeah.
And so who, but before we get to that, who actually does review, so you're not looking to me or Heather or Heather, uh anybody to actually see about how responses, I mean, I would like the staff, frankly, to say, I've looked at the plan, I know it came in at five thirty, so we're not quite there where we should be, but have you had a chance to go over the, you know, the, the trees, the light fixtures? Um we've, somewhere in here is it written, I got a cut sheet, but uh about the dry laid stone wall, four feet in height. I mean, I've got all this miscellaneous stuff, but who's actually pulling it all together?
So um I had asked for, for, for this very reason, I had asked for us to have just one document, you know, one PDF with everything in it because, to be frank, there's been a lot of different versions of a lot of different plans and my, it's, it's messy in terms of how many different ones. Yeah, so that's why I was like, we just-
I don't wanna be responsible.
Right, well, it was more, we need one, one PDF to look at um and do a full review. We got that today.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so who is, who is part of this review team, I think is what Maureen's getting at.
Engineering and planning.
Okay.
And so you will, you have been accumulating all the design review and?
Yes, definitely.
Oh great, good.
So.
Oh, it hasn't been reviewed for that.
Right, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, because before, before, before we, we put our imprimatur on it, I'd wanna know that it was confirmed.
I just wanted to reiterate that it has not been reviewed.
Well, so, I mean, no, so no, this ver, this entire set has not been reviewed to, to a degree where I'm looking at every single paid, I mean, like I said, we just, we just, we got, nearly all the work that has been done, though, has been related to the drainage. And there has not been much work done, like most of these plans, you've seen them before.
Yes.
However, I have not double checked that there haven't been any changes in it.
But she's asking about a list of design things that we're trying to like remember.
The lighting, the trees, the um stone wall.
So, that's just the minutes of, yeah, so that's, so.
Are you creating some, I mean, I would love a matrix that uh-
Yeah, they just had, they just had a list of the items and check, 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 check.
Yeah.
I guess we're-
Well, I think, so what we, you mean whether, everything that has been incorporated from all of our meetings, design review and historical commission?
Yes, the historical.
Yeah, so that, yes, that is, that has not happened, uh so to be very clear, no.
So I'd make a checklist so that we know, okay, but make sure.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, it's, you, so everyone here has the historical commission and the design review comments, they're-
Like you, it's like I'm in-
I have like five hundred pages.
I know.
So I think, I think what we're looking for is a final document which indicates all of the different concerns that have been expressed and indicates whether or not the, these plans, the complete package addresses those. And so sort of an organized checklist going through and saying, okay, here's what the DRC said and um here's where it, we can check off on the, on the, on the application that it's been dealt with. Because we're seeing, you know, a zillion different details and we don't know how it matches onto the plan. So we're just looking for a final package like that.
And has the Board of Health chimed in at all?
Um yes, they have. Uh they had a, a minor comment.
So you had that into your list of the-
Yeah, no, that's, that was already, that's already in my potential list of conditions.
Yeah.
Right.
It was a, it had to do with getting a fill permit for when they, I mean, no, no issues is, is the short answer.
So we need to, so we know that um Concom has been asked to do stuff, at least from VHB. Obviously, the DRC has given us comments and you've gotten comments from um, well, you're gonna get more comments from us, but you already have comments from us. Okay, so why don't, so we, we, we have an assurance that such a checklist is being, will be created.
And I wanna add to that, that, I don't know, I know it's not legally required, but I want somebody to let these people know across Highland that there's a condition now that we're contemplating that will uh be in the town's property. It has to be really clear, it is the town's property, but they should be aware that it's uh as a result of the-
Yeah.
Project on Highland twenty, at, or was it Highland?
Yeah, that's a proposed, proposed project.
So just, yeah, coordinate with the western side of Highland Avenue.
Yep.
Okay, so are we ready to have the applicant come forward and tell us what's changed? Everybody okay with that? Okay, so Mr. Miller, you wanna come up?
I wanna work to a time.
Yeah.
Is there our timer?
Pardon?
Our timer?
Our timer, yeah, so why don't we, why don't we do this? So I, I'd like to have uh at least ten minutes to discuss, for the board to discuss. Um we started a bit late this evening, about five minutes late, so uh Mr. Miller, you think you can get through this in about seven minutes?
Sure.
Okay, we'll give you seven minutes and then hopefully that timer works today.
Let me go back to the uh, oh, it's this one?
Who's got the mouse?
He does.
Oh.
So in terms of what's changed since the last time?
Yeah.
It would be this page, these cloud, C one. So this is the erosion, the clearing and grubbing plan. So in response to the comments we got at one of our previous meetings, we've clouded, circled all the trees that we wanna preserve outside of the clearing and grubbing area. Others cannot be preserved because there are homes planned for those areas, or in this case drainage structures here and here. Uh so that was one comment that we were asked to add, which we did. So on this plan, we, we reference on this retaining wall detail, we reference a, a detail at the end of the drawing set, which I'll show you shortly, that incorporates, as Brian mentioned, the uh dry laid stone retaining wall. And you did as well, right? The uh s, dry laid stone wall retain detail, so it's not an ancillary piece of paper, it's actually in the plan set. So that's in the plan.
Not to exceed four feet.
Correct, that's what the drawing says here. So that's this piece. This is the drainage plan, but really.
Just zoom down, zoom a little smaller so I can see the page numbers on it, just for my notes.
C two.
So maybe, but I just wanted to double check as we go through it.
No problem at all. So this one would be C three, which is, I'm sorry, that's C two still. I, I hit the up button instead of the page button. This is the drainage plan, uh nothing has changed here. On the grading plan, as Beth mentioned, we've completely reworked this little area here to VHB's satisfaction. We've done a lot of work and so have they over the last several days. And between our comments and input and Beth's and VHB's, we've come up with what I think is the best solution to that problem of allowing that water to continue to get to where it used to go. And so uh this area here has changed. We've got a modification here in the uh grass strip that's on the town's property, that's changed. And also, as Beth mentioned, we've got a little dipsy-doo grade that changes here. Instead of going a steady one percent from roughly here to the end, VHB recommended that we come up
Oh, yeah.
and then go back down again to this low point where the catch basin is. So that reduces some of the TSS or total suspended solids that Beth mentioned because now some of those will be collected instead of being shed off the site. And so that's what's changed here. Otherwise, this whole drawing stays.
The one, one thing that we did um also do was extend the guardrail.
Yeah, I was gonna get to that on the next page.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, so on the grading plan, that's the only change on this sheet.
So on this one, trying to get an answer to my question, um where would a hundred year flood put the water so that the house wouldn't get?
Roughly ten feet away. So the corner of that house is right there.
Yeah.
And the swale that we're creating, right, goes right across here. You can kinda see how those contours all line up. And you see that curve in these series of contours, that means it's higher.
Right.
So that, that area is right here and it intersects right here where these contours are being shown. That's a little swale that we're creating in the grass strip. And to answer your question earlier, uh why doesn't the house flood? It's because everything's on a hill. And so unless somebody were to come in and put a dam across Highland Avenue, the water will never encroach upon that house because it's always moving, always moving. So it, it can't, it can never come up and, and threaten the house because it's always going downhill.
How high is the house above the sidewalk?
Uh three to four feet. So just the principles of physics and gravity, the water's moving, it can't continue to rise because it's always outletting downhill.
Depends upon the rate of flow. If you have a high enough flow, it doesn't matter how fast it's moving, you will actually get a rise in waters.
That would take a, a, a monumental, I mean, we're already dealing with a hundred year storm, it would be way outside that. And because, here's why, because you have, the channel now is the entire street. So you're not talking about just a narrow little channel which could in fact rise and fall with a increase in flow. We've gone from this point, by the time the water leaves the corner of that property, enters the new carpet that we've created and then outlets into Highland, you now have the entire width of Highland, the grass strip on the other side, the grass strip on this side. And so there's no possible way for that water to grow because the channel is now thirty times bigger than it was when it left the project site.
Okay, that, that makes sense.
Just an order of magnitude that just can't happen. There would, like I said, there'd have to be a blockage, so a tree would have to fall, pileup of cars, you know. So that's this page. Uh we've modified the landscaping to improve, to improve here.
So they were asking for two street trees on Highland.
Those are right here.
Yep, what are they?
Oh, off the top of my head, I don't know.
And which one is this, C four?
C three, uh C five.
C five, we're up to C five already.
So are those trees where the swale is?
Yeah.
Was that, so uh we'll have to look at other locations like that.
Yeah, why don't we put, I, originally when we talked about, so this, there's a, there's a uh sequence here that caused that to happen.
Right.
That's fine.
Right, so I'll move those trees out into the town strip if that's okay, because that's unoccupied.
Well, I'm thinking even if you put them on the, um, on the upper side of um.
Over here?
You're trying with, or you're-
Over here?
Yeah.
Well.
On the, we're filing out stuff, but on the, just so they're not where we're gonna be recreating.
Over here, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean.
Okay, that's fine with me.
It's up the door, but it would be kinda out of the area where we're recreating and doing other work.
That's fine with me.
They should be trees that can, they are, the design review, this is Julie's actual note rather than the summary from Eileen. It says, we asked for um two street trees on Highland Avenue for canopy and to define the street edge after the existing trees are gone. So they're looking for a street canopy. I wanna point out that this is going to be a very wet setting.
No, no, it's only the hundred year storm, which is very unusual.
Wet anyway.
It's not, it doesn't stay wet because it's, again, it's, it's sloped. It's not like a flat area where water can just collect, it can't collect. It actually runs all the time. Even when water's on it, it's gone. So the water doesn't sit there and collect and grow, it just flows. Even with a grassy strip that's full of leaves, it's still gonna flow because you've got a hill.
But when you're in March weather and the ground's frozen?
Well, even more reason because it can't go in, it, it flows, so it always flows.
Anyway, I do support their general interest in street canopy, so I don't know how you, I won't solve that here.
You don't want it planted in the swell.
Understood, of course.
I'm happy to move, I'm happy to move those two right here.
We're responsible for your time.
Okay, yeah, so we'll give you a couple more minutes, why don't we?
What she is that?
C five.
C five.
It'll be smaller if you put them in the sidewalk.
You also, when you, since you're gonna relocate that, can you also define what they are?
They're on the plan.
That was my question.
They're on the plan, right there. See the table?
Yeah, the box, I know, the table's dinky.
That, that's not a helpful comment since none of us can read that.
Well, hang on a second, I'll blow it up so everyone can read it. It's, it's, this is how you do it on a plan set. There's the trees right there, there's the size, the caliper, right? So let's see, that is a, that is a four, that's quantity AR, that's an AR tree.
Probably.
Acer, red maple, right?
Okay.
Red maple.
Those have, those actually have shallow roots. I do wonder if that's the right choice.
Well, well, let's, let's, why don't we um-
I must say, I don't think that our staff has the ability to do that, but maybe I'm wrong, but.
Well, why don't, why don't-
Hi, I'm Allison.
Right.
Let's, let's, let's make a note of, of the, of whether or not the species are appropriate.
I would ask maybe Brian or Beth, if you're figuring out location, that's fine, but do envision a street canopy tree. Um but we could go to, try Elaine and if not, Julie Reiman Schneider would be the right person, but just.
I think that, did this retreat committee, I'm saying, you might know, don't they have a less so trees, that's the argument.
As, as much as I feel trees are important, um why don't we move on to the rest of this plan so we can get to a discussion?
An action item.
I'm gonna add to that. One is a V A R, the other one is a P O, which is a cherry. Um it's too small, so they're not too, they're not the same.
They're not the same.
Okay.
That's fine. We'll, we'll make them whatever the town's tree list wants them to be.
Well, it's not, you're gonna need somebody who actually knows the site, not every tree.
I, I think this is just one of a number of issues that we will have to have dealt with.
We gotta bring it to an end at some point, though, right?
At some point, it will be brought to an end when we're happy with it, so let's move on.
There were months ahead of this to start talking about trees. I mean, we're, we're kinda-
That's why I'm asking us to move on.
Adding new comments at the very end is a little-
Can we please move on to the next page in this that we have just seen today?
To be honest. I mean, we're all working in good faith and this is, you're just adding misery to the whole process.
I think that, why don't we concentrate on the plans in front of us and just leave it at that?
So this is, this, uh this plan here, C six and C seven are just a repeat of the drainage plan that you saw here because what we're doing on this plan is showing the profile of the road. So this little area here has changed, right here, and that's it. Um I'm gonna get to Brian's comment because I skipped over, I'm trying to see what plan it's on. Let's see if it's this one or not.
Yeah, I think it shows up on landscaping, I think it shows up on grading.
On the wall, the rail.
The guardrail.
So it was only going over some and not part of the end of the hammerhead. So our, previously, our plan had the guardrail ending right here and not continuing to the end of the hammerhead because we needed that extra two feet for the overhang of the fire engine after the tire of the fire engine hit the curb. So we've now changed that, uh we've added the guardrail all the way to the end, we've expanded the hammerhead in this direction and in this direction. And we've added to the plan set the truck turn radiuses that justify and illustrate that it conforms with all fire truck apparatus. All Winchester apparatus.
With that, going to the HOA, since I know you're working on that, a lot of the hammerheads, they do require no parking at the hammerheads because if there's parking there, the trucks can't get in and get out.
We have, we have, we have.
Include that in your HOA.
We have no parking on the, I think we have a sign for it. But I'll make sure.
And what page is this again?
The safety issue.
Uh, spicy.
Okay, give you another couple more. Since we're dragging this up.
We're making progress.
C four.
C four. Oh, we're not going in linear, okay.
Can I ask a question? Is it already signed for no parking along the road? We talked about that.
We were talking about ones, we were gonna, I think it was one side definitely, no parking at all.
I think I saw that.
Yeah, I think so. I'd have to look. We'll make sure that it is since we're coming back at it.
And.
So I missed, so the recommendation is that there's no parking at all on this street?
Yeah, so I, the fire department has like a, a recommendation they've made in terms of roadwoods and.
So.
I think for that roadwood, they recommended no parking.
I think that's an excellent idea because I, cause I will tell you, at night, once it gets dark, it's very hard to see.
But the signs, they were up there. They were there.
The signs are in.
So the one piece I've not heard about, maybe this late in the game, but when we're talking about the guardrail, I do want to direct this to Beth. I remember way back with Fitzgerald Ave or whenever, right, hello, we've been around a while, haven't we? And the issues about where the snow goes when it's being plowed. So where, I mean, it's logically, it's, where's the town gonna dump the snow, especially if you got?
It's gonna get pushed up against that guardrail.
That's what I'm saying. Exactly. And then it's gonna break and.
What's gonna break?
The guardrail.
It will. And they've broken our street sign, which is metal. I mean, they break them.
I'm, I'm actually also concerned about the essentially pollutants from the road getting dumped onto the conservation land right next to it.
So DRC, they had, they had mentioned to have a lower portion of the guardrail to block salt and sand, which the applicant, which, which the applicant did.
We've added, so to the standard DCR detail for wood guardrail, which we were using originally. Uh, we added a, oh, I'm trying to find the detail, but we added an extra, let's try to find that.
Because D nine, wasn't that on your sheet?
Probably at the end. Okay, right here. So let's.
Would be a guardrail.
So normally, this detail only has one rail. And the reason for that is because this is only twenty-four inches tall by code with DCR, a twenty-four inch tall guardrail with a twelve inch wide rail beam, right? So conservation asked for the specific reason that you referenced. Can we add something lower to prevent salt spray and snow from plowing through that gap low down and impacting the wetlands? So this is what we've added. There's now only a three inch gap here and a three inch gap down there at the bottom. So if the salt gets through.
That is that. Does somebody have, and I'll turn, I'm sorry Craig, it's on your, the clocks, we got rid of that. Do we know where the snow is going when it's plowed?
Well, so if this is a private way, the town, unless they make other, the homeowners association makes other arrangements, the town will plow it.
Exactly, yeah.
My guess is that they will come in and plow and push it to the right, up against that guardrail.
Yeah.
I mean, another, another, I mean, how, I, I don't see another option. I mean, so the idea of, of putting the.
I'm not looking at.
No, I know. Well, just the idea of putting the rest of that guardrail on the bottom was based upon the last conversation that we all had here of specifically cars backing up at night in the winter.
Oh, yeah.
So it was, it was, felt it was an unsafe situation. I thought we had all said that we wanted to extend it all the way.
I'm not objecting. I'm just, I'm, I'm.
So what, what, so what typically happens on all, on, I'm sorry, Maureen, what typically happens on all roads in New England and in Winchester when it snows, and it snows a lot for several weeks or months at a time, and it just keeps adding up, is that the travel lane goes from eighteen feet down to twelve, down to ten, which is still passable by all vehicles, including emergency vehicles. So what happens is that snow storage ends up happening on the road itself. And in the winter, for a month and a half, you go from having an eighteen wide, wide open road to a twelve foot wide. And it, and it works. And it's six feet and it's plenty of room.
Well, what would happen is a fire truck would simply, like, the, the fire department said, they would just go in and they would go out.
Back out. And Captain, Captain Tustin has said several times, as I've talked to him about the turning radiuses, that he's fine backing out of this.
Okay.
Who wants to bet?
Well, if it gets damaged, then it has to get fixed. And presumably, that's, it's not the town that's gonna fix it.
I think that's an important point to make, and that's what I talked to Art about this afternoon in the HOA document, is that this, if this is to remain a private way, it is not the town of Winchester who will go out there and fix the guardrail.
Right.
Responsibility of that HOA.
That's right.
Right.
To make those repairs of the guardrail, there's curving, make repairs to the road, all of that is not town of Winchester.
Well.
But the town's plowing, oh god.
It doesn't matter. I mean, the HOA must include language about guardrail, guardrail repairs.
Right.
Unless we take over the road. So let's just leave it at that.
Just to be fair, these guardrails are tested and the reason the spec exists is because they've been tested for the force of impact.
Right.
From snow, from plows, from cars. So they don't just break like a brittle piece of wood. They actually hold up quite well. If we had to, we'd put steel in there to make sure that it didn't, but I like wood better because I think it fits in better with the character of the environment. So.
Well, just, the HOA will have language, one way or the other, to deal with that.
We're good there.
I, I have seen and with hammerheads, with this, where they actually designate an area where the snow goes.
Exactly. I've seen it on our, in this town.
So, but I don't know how that helps, but.
Right, I'm surprised.
The corners were so constrained by the property boundaries that were set up as part of the land transfer, that there was. Ideally, you would give that space at the end of the hammerhead, where you have a space before the guardrail. Like you'd, and the, the curving, then there would be a space and there would be the guardrail.
In between the houses, you can put it too, if you needed to.
Yeah.
Right, but, but like I said a few minutes ago, so we've got eighteen feet of road. There's a full six feet before it even threatens the travel lane. So that's a huge amount of snow. And you could pile snow at each corner of the hammerhead and the fire department can still get in and get out because they've said they had no problem doing that.
I'm not worried about that.
Okay, so then, so then the snow storage issue is a problem, but it's solvable within the design that we provided. So it works.
I'll be around.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we move on to the next one?
All right, so. And then those details that I mentioned earlier about the truck turning radiuses are all in the new sheets that we've added here. So this backs up all of the turning radiuses for the slightly modified hammerhead.
And which sheet is this again?
This is D eleven.
D eleven, okay. And I'm assuming that the fire chief is happy with, is okay with these? He hasn't seen these?
They all work and we'd have to rely on, I think, VHB to say yes to the auto turn. We can give VHB the auto turn. They can say yes. And then certify that these, what we've printed on the plan is in fact.
The, the truck analysis was not part of the H B scope, but we did meet Captain Tustin.
He was, and he was satisfied. Captain Tustin was satisfied.
Okay.
Okay.
The last time we met.
I'm just making sure it's been checked.
We've made it bigger since then, so.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, that's important.
And then the last item is just adding this as a, I'm sorry, second to last item is adding this as the example for the dry laid stone retaining wall that would go down at the bottom on lot one. And so that's not a floating piece of paper anywhere. Uh, here's the lighting plan. Here's the lighting fixture. Ten foot tall, tasteful, right? And here's the lumens. We've got a zero in here, but it's really a short distance. I feel like if we added a fourth pole, it would be overkill. You had asked us, I wanted two, you asked for three, so here's the three. And that wraps up.
So I, I sort of mentioned on the. For late night dog walkers.
On the light fixture, that, that, I believe the subdivision regulations call it the use of the town of Winchester standard light fixture. I guess the question is, I think on private ways, the town still changes the bulbs on streetlights just from a safety standpoint. So this is not standard town of Winchester fixture and the town of Winchester can't be responsible for going in and changing bulbs, making repairs.
Wasn't this the acorn, wasn't this the acorn though that Fitzgerald, that, I think that was?
Is it the same? I, that's what I was.
That, yeah, I know. I know that was the, that was the example that.
But we'll leave that as a question. Beth makes a good point, but why don't you guys figure it out?
Yeah, just make a note and make a note that.
These are LEDs, so it'll be twenty years before anyone's changing the bulb.
No, but that, well, I, I thought that in my head, when it was changing the light bulbs.
Does the town have a regulation about shining down versus going up into the sky?
Well, I see DRC was talking about a light, making sure there's a blacktop cover.
Like I said, we have a town of Winchester standard light fixture. And then the town went through and retrofit all of our light fixtures with the LED fixture that we now have. So that was maybe done three or four years ago.
Yep. So if we just give that back to Craig, so he has it.
As long as, as long as it's attractive, I, I'm, you know, I'm happy to change it. I, I like the look of this.
Well, I think the one in Fitzgerald that we recently did was an acorn style just like this, I believe. And I believe that.
Yeah.
Yeah, just put a note in there. I don't know if the town has light pollution standards, which I don't.
This, this, this.
Not for, not for streetlights.
Not for streetlights.
That's weird.
In the zoning ballot for.
But this has a, this has.
But there's nothing saying so much has to go down to the ground versus up.
Well, this has a refractor in the top, so it's all black on the top.
Yeah, but I, I can assure you astronomers hate the LED lights.
I feel up to me, there'd be no lights.
Being an astronomer, I hate those LED lights.
Up to me, I'd put no lights, but you know, this is.
Okay, guys.
Anyway, um, okay, so. Excellent. So you've got that note. Craig, is that pretty much it for your, the deltas?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so I think at this point, the board will have a discussion amongst themselves. So if I could ask you, Craig, to go back into the.
Yeah, I'm just packing up my belongings.
Yep. And so at this point, we are, why don't we give ourselves, what I like to do is have people, you know, let's go around the table. Each person gets a couple of minutes and talk about how you feel about this, whether we want to continue with this to another meeting or whether you feel like you have enough information to make a decision tonight. Cause that's the decision in front of us, so.
Well, I'm, I'm liking, I am liking it better as we are going along. But I think that we did, with it, we wanted to ensure that we had those few questions and items that we had earlier. And I think we're gonna want, before we think we vote it, I think we're gonna want to just ensure, I mean, you know, you know, it's been purported to us that it's going to be on there, but, and I have no reason to doubt that. But if we're voting on something like this, I would, I would like to know that that plan is complete.
Which plan was this? Just the whole thing?
The checklist we asked Brian to do.
Checklist, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I agree about that, but also I thought we were on hold because of the homeowners part.
I'm asking for each person to give their opinion. So if you think it's important, then you should say it. Cause I may not.
Well, I don't have other comments. I just thought we weren't really voting because we wanted Art's feedback and we wanted to look at the HOA doc.
Well, it's at this point where each person states whether they are interested in waiting or not. Because we haven't really had a group discussion about this, but we could, we could avoid that whole thing if we all agree, so.
I would like to see a checklist because I have all these different plans and different notes from people's meetings. And it would be nice to see it in one cheat sheet.
Be able to sort of bring it all together.
You know, just like, yes, all of these things were addressed. Okay, good, we can move on.
Okay.
Agree with everything Beth's, Heather's said.
And, okay.
I would continue to hopefully wrap up with, but I would say this, it's going to take back and forth with the HOA. And Craig, if, if the, just as, maybe it's directed to Craig, we can vote it if it's approved. But if it's not been approved, we're gonna be extending this, requesting an extension.
You know, I mean, legal said they just need a couple of days and then.
Well, we have to make sure that it has.
Comments and then Craig responds and it's back and forth, which is fine, but it's not on our time. It's on their time.
Right, but it would still be Art, I mean, to be honest, if Art's saying that this is what he would like, I don't know why we wouldn't necessarily agree with that.
We would agree that Art's approval is necessary but not sufficient. In that there may be things that we want in there that Art does not know about.
Or doesn't care about.
Or doesn't care. So having Art's approval is, is necessary.
You gotta throw that thing out.
I am gonna turn this.
No, 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 someone must like it.
Okay, okay, so I spoke out of turn, Heather. Are you done, Maureen? Okay, Heather?
Yeah, I wanna see the HOA. The one issue with the HOA, which you just addressed, is Art's gonna look at it for his approval. And then we're gonna come in and review it behind everyone. And, you know, things like saying, even though there's no parking signs at the hammerhead, I like to say it's part of the no parking requirement on the HOA. So stuff like that, which Art isn't going to be thinking of. And I'm trying to figure out the best way to incorporate those without.
Too much back and forth.
Circling. Because we can't as a, as a board, we're not allowed to provide input directly to Art, I guess. And that's how we'd have to go about it, is we'd review it and provide our feedback directly to Art before he sends it onward to the applicant. And only Art would be the one who sees our comments.
Maybe the best way is if you can get ahead of it and think of just at least topics that you would, I mean, I know you lived in a condo. You've got some, I'm hearing the, what the voice of a woman with experience.
I understand condo management, but.
Yeah, no, same here. So I think if you have ideas, though, you can ship them out ahead of the game rather than waiting to see what Art and Craig come up with. I mean, obviously, you may still react, but I think it'd be less likely.
It's a most efficient way to do it.
Yeah, right. Uh, I mean, he's gonna, so, so Art's gonna review the draft that was sent over, the one that's up here. I'll have, I'll obviously talk with him, but if, if there are any things that you know that you want to have in the HOA, I would email them to me as soon as possible so that I can get them to Art and see whether or not they're reasonable, I, I guess. I think that's the, so I think that's.
Did we get the file in our email?
We do not have.
The HOA, yeah, where's the HOA draft as it currently sits?
The HOA got sent, so the HOA got sent when I sent the link. I sent a link, it was too big to send, so I sent, I sent a link that the applicant.
Today that we just received.
Yeah, it's called, and it just says Abby. That, there's like twelve or several PDFs in there and one of them just says Abby. If that's the agreement.
Though, and maybe if you would make notes, in addition to looking at the drainage, which is absolutely the most important thing, that since this is a private way, and I live on one, that this homeowners association should be expected to, it should be laid out that they will be funding the maintenance and replacement of that roadway.
Definitely, of course. I mean, that's what, that's the definition of a private road.
That was one of my comments. I don't think it's clear in the document right now. It's clear about the drainage maintenance. I don't think it's clear that they are responsible for the capital maintenance of the roadway.
Exactly.
Right, not just, I think in there, we was just talking about potholes.
Potholes, stuff like that, but it needs to be clear that they, you know, they should be saving for the next twenty years to be made of the roadway.
They rebuild. We rebuild, but we don't have an HOA. So it's volunteer.
So when it comes up again in full scale.
So, so the, so let's make sure that HOA includes road reconstruction.
Yep.
And repairs due to snow removal.
Construction and repairs.
And, you know, road surface curving, guardrail.
And maintenance.
Guardrail.
There's no sign-offs, right? So. Especially in that kind of stuff.
Guardrail.
Drainage.
Not on a private.
Drainage. Okay, so let's make sure those are in there. And, okay, so we're still going around looking for comments. Are, is that pretty much, are you done, Heather?
So I need to do a memo to you, Brian, of everything. Once I have, because we just received that this evening before we came here. So once I go through and review the most recent one, send you my comments and then go onward to Art.
Correct.
Okay. Or should I just send them directly to Art?
Uh, better to funnel them, yeah, I mean, as long, yeah.
Okay.
Wait, sorry, what was the direction to go to you?
Uh, Art and CC me.
Okay.
And I can't see the rest, I cannot include the rest of the board on it.
That's correct. Okay, um, so.
That's where I stand. I, I think we need to get the HOA in place in a stronger position and then come back. And I think also, I would like to see some of the issues that we talked about, just the plans update instead of having had a condition placed on the subdivision using, saying that it meets this plan in place. So let's get the, the light fixture addressed and a revised plan instead of putting conditions on it. It'd be easier since we have this time right now. There's that. There was, the street trees was the other one.
Yep.
Um, and working through that and. There's gotta be some, there's someone at the DBW who has that scale. Who's on the street trees, who's responsible.
Jay Gill is head of the street.
Jim Shattuck.
Oh, Jim, sorry, I got that wrong.
Oh, you know why? Cause they use, they use, they use a consultant, a consultant for their trees.
It's Julie.
Well, let's, yeah.
Julie looked at it recently.
Let's, let's, yeah, so we've got trees on that.
Can you just close that out so it's, it doesn't come back up again? Can you just close that out, so it's, it doesn't come back up again?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I have nothing new to say, so, um, I agree with everything that's been said. So, I think what, what I'm guessing from the board is a motion to continue this.
Right, yes, the, the only thing is that we, so we have a, um, we've already continued six fifty-four main. We've left that open on the seventeenth at nine o'clock to have a final, to, to allow the applicant to potentially withdraw. So, that's happening at nine, I believe, um, if we were gonna continue this, it would have to be at a minimum of nine fifteen. So, we have to continue to a time certain.
The question I have is that enough time for all of these, all of these odds and ends to get tied together?
No.
And, and that's where, you know, I'm out of town for four days and I will not have a chance to look over these prior to the.
To the seventeenth?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
I have a hundred and ten page document for the master plan that I have to review. I have work and I'm gonna be out of town for four days, so I cannot possibly review this by next Monday.
Right, right.
So, I believe that means that we're up to January eighth.
That's the layout that's dropped dead, so.
It's a drop dead date.
That's the, that's, so.
A decision needs to be rendered by then, yes.
So, so the question.
Another meeting this month?
No, we were.
Well, we're master plan meeting.
We have master plan on the seventeenth and then it's Christmas, New Year's.
Yeah, so we're pretty much done, so the. I think that December eighth being the drop dead date leaves, thank you, January eighth. Um, I don't think there's, I don't like that in the terms of timing. I wish we had a little more buffers, because I'd like us to be able to meet, have the opportunity to maybe meet twice if needed. So, I would, I, I personally would like to ask the applicant for an extension. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I understand how you feel.
Well, let's, I, we don't, I just, I think Craig's hearing it and I think that, I think we can go to the eighth and have, I think he's probably motivated. Motivated, as they say, and so is, um, I think Art is very responsive, I do realize it's over Christmas, but there's enough time for a homeowners.
No, I mean, Art, Art basically said that he could have something by Thursday, that, that's, that's, Art's not the holdup here.
And if there's a huge hiccup, uh, which I don't entirely, I think it's possible we will be fine. Um, so I guess I'd like to be, look on the bright side and say we can certainly ask for the extension if things go as.
I know.
But you don't have to ask for that at the moment.
No, we don't, and I, and I have to, and I have to say.
Yep, okay.
And I feel, personally, I feel much more encouraged after tonight's meeting, to be honest.
I think it's doable.
Okay.
It's pretty, I think we were pretty clear on what we're looking for and what, where our holdups are.
Okay.
Okay.
And if you have that checklist and then he sees where the holes are, that will help too, to make sure we're on the same.
When you create that checklist, will you please make sure Craig has a copy?
Of cour, no.
The applicant.
So, so can we, um, put a deadline on the checklist? Can we say checklist, you know, so that we can.
Whatever you want.
What are you able to do?
Yeah, let's not say whatever we want, yeah, so let's.
What is, what's a reasonable time for you to turn it around? So be by the end of the week?
I think I could prob, I, I think get the latest Monday, but I, I think I wanna shoot for this week, yes.
Okay, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Hey, you have, you have to take care of the kitties.
Oh, he has some meetings he has to go to.
Lots of meetings this week, Brian, are you sure?
Um, okay, let's wrap this one up.
I think it should, I'm, I'm, I'm shooting for Friday and I think worst case Monday, but I'm shooting for Friday.
So why don't we continue this meeting, or continue this hearing until, um, January the eighth?
At seven thirty.
At seven thirty-five, just so we have five minutes of crotch at the beginning.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing to January, January, January eighth at seven thirty-five P M.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, there we are, five not. Thank you, and our apologies to whoever's waiting on us.
Can I get a half set of these, Brian, instead of holes set?
Uh, sure.
Can I borrow these for my conservation meeting if I can give them back to you?
I think, yeah, I mean.
Hold on one sec.
They don't know.
Petition thirty, petition thirty seventy-two, three Meadowcroft.
Yes.
This has been heavily vetted by the Rangel Park Heritage District Commission, the Historical Commission and Design Review. There have been no issues associated with the design or the streetscape or the look and feel, anything related to design, that is all pass with flying colors. Um, my only comment is actually an echo of the engineering department, which is that, um, the stormwater infrastructure calculations were never really incorporated into this project, it was just a simple, this is the location of a drywell, but it doesn't actually show the calculations needed for the roof runoff, for the, for the new roof runoff, that it's actually gonna accommodate that. So, um, my only comment was that those calculations should be, um, incorporated into the project so that the proposed drywell can accommodate the water runoff from the addition, and otherwise I recommend in favorable action with regards to this petition.
Okay.
Alright.
Um, does anyone have any comment?
No.
That all makes sense.
Okay, so.
So moved, as, as a town, as our town planner suggested.
Yeah, so I, yeah.
So, you're saying approve with conditions?
Approve with conditions that, um.
Approve with the condition that the stormwater infrastructure calculations be incorporated into the project so that the proposed drywell can accommodate the water runoff from the addition.
Right, and that we can see what the engineering impact is.
So, in other words, the sentence.
The sentence that I put in my memo.
Yeah, just put.
That's the one.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Heather, Hanon, sec, oh wait, let's wait, you're the one taking notes, so we have to wait for him.
Just a sec.
You gotta type faster.
Okay, so the motion was Von Mary, second was Hanon.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Four zero one recused.
Four oh one recused, okay, the next.
Usually you have to say, um, Maureen recused.
Uh.
Maureen, yes, well, she had, yeah, cause she was.
Just, just to note who recused.
Alright.
Okay, the next one, so seven thirty-five main.
Let's go, let's go.
One second, let me get our recused member.
Okay.
I don't, is she coming back?
She's over there, she left all of her stuff.
Yeah, she'll be back, she's got all that gingerbread.
Do you like to return back then? Yep.
I know, I should have brought like a scarf.
Dress up a little bit, like Disney.
Okay, so, seven thirty-five main.
Right, um, so, seven thirty-five main, um, this is a special permit under section nine point four to be permitted to construct a three-story building with retail space and structured parking on the first floor with eight residential units on the second and third floor, properties located in the G B D two as well as the Village Center overlay district. Um, site plan review is also triggered due to the new use proposed on vacant land.
Right.
Okay.
Um, so, the main, um, the main issue that I'm having with this uh, and the engineering department and I met with the applicant pre-application, um, told them that the configuration, uh, the current configuration of the road would not allow a left turn going south, um, into the property and that we instructed the applicant that before they apply or concurrently with this application, they talk with the select board because that is a whole other issue with a public hearing associated with changing the configuration of that road, basically lopping off portions of that, um, island, no man's land.
Yeah, who owns, is it just town?
That's town.
That's town.
It's town, sorry.
Right now, there's, um, as you're turning, if you're on scaling turn, you're turning right onto Main Street. There's like a small triangle there.
Here, it's here.
Yeah, could, could you put the, uh.
I can bring up the other one.
Yeah, bring up the other one.
That's helpful.
So whose is that, the parking?
So that, that is all included in the right of way of this, the road.
Yes.
That's, that's ours.
Like a separate parcel, it's the right of way.
Okay.
Um, so any modifications to the curb line or traffic flow, parking, would be in the jurisdiction of this lot for it.
And as of right now, that is, you cannot turn right and go through it, it's not a through.
It's not a through A, so you basically can't enter from the, either way.
So people certainly use it that way, I think, you know.
Yeah, but it's illegal.
People, and people who are familiar with the area, so, we met last week, uh, and Brian wasn't there, it was just Brian, Carrie and I. Uh, we met with their traffic engineer.
Get a little map over here.
So we talked about ways in which they could, um, modify it so it's clear that it's not a through way for people to be going. It's just for people who are accessing those businesses, um.
Is there a better way to do all of that if we're gonna redo it anyway?
Um.
We, we.
Better is a.
So, you know, the.
Nicer?
It's a very, uh, non aesthetically pleasing area.
No, it's not, it's not, but it is sort of open there, but it is kind of open there on the end, though, you know.
Businesses who use those parking spaces are very protective of, because it is the other park that's providing to their businesses. So, over the years, as we've done things around that area, they've been very protective of those spaces. So, um, I, I did say to the applicant and their traffic engineer that I thought there were things they could do to improve the aesthetics of that with some landscaping or whatever else, um, I suggested that they try to keep the existing number of parking spaces that are there but try to, you know, work it with some improved pedestrian, uh.
Can we actually get the overhead?
Function and some improved.
There's, there's something I don't understand about this.
Make it a little bit more cohesive of an area.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah, so, what I'm, so currently, uh.
How many spots are there?
This is, it's right here, so.
I don't know, in the island DC.
The, the right of way that they have to put the driveway in is, I think, right here.
It's basically directly in front of this bowl, straight, straight here.
Into this property easily is actually to come through here.
The no through zone, yes.
In a no through zone, which is totally inappropriate.
Correct.
So, there is actually no access from Main Street onto this property, other than through this.
Or the other end, on the side that's closer to the dump.
But if you have a parcel there, can't you pull in there? I mean, how else would you get to your parking?
I actually don't think it's that inappropriate that they only accesses through that area. Um, it does stop people from making the left turning movement from Main Street into that site, which is a dangerous turning movement.
It is, yeah.
So I don't think, I'm not so concerned about people having to go through that area to access it. Um, if that's, obviously it's not ideal, but that's just the way the site's set up, they, and there's an empty very stories going through there, so they can't put a building there.
There, there is.
They do have to, they, and, so that's a good point that we didn't mention, is that they actually do need to enter there.
Yeah, they can't enter anywhere else.
Well, that's not true, cause the other, the prior house that was there was entered on the other end. You can actually see it was here.
Yeah, on the far end.
Right, but there's a, there's, they can't, they can't put a building there.
So this is the, this is the sewer line.
That was the entrance to this property was right here. And if you put it here, the other problem is you have, is all the pedestrians that are coming on, that are from the north, this side of North Main are all coming down here and they cross right here, and now you're having all this traffic flow right and they can't get down here without having, without having this safety as when the entrance to the site was over here was safer, because it's farther away from this.
It's a different parcel, isn't it?
No, this is the driveway for this, the original house, the storehouse that was there. It was over here, and then you had the green burn.
So, the, I mean, in essence, what they'd have to do then is, cause they can't put the building on the right of the property because of the right of way for the M W R A, they'd essentially have to have a driveway loop all the way around to get to the parking on the other side of the structure.
Right, so you're, yeah, it'd be going like this.
That the structure is too big for what the site can accommodate.
The usual, sorry.
Trying to slam it all in there and then expect the town to take on the.
Are you seeing a pattern emerging?
Well, they're building something that's, they can build.
Yeah, right, thank you.
Well, well, they can build it by.
Are we discussing the right topic first or whatever?
Well, I think.
Multiple topics.
There's multiple topics.
So, what, I, I mentioned it because we had told the applicant that you should be, we, I mean, we gave the roadmap the, the attorney who was representing them, I talked with them after.
Attorney, representative?
Tarby.
Yeah.
Uh, he represents a lot of people. Um, he was like, yes, I remember that conversation, um, so, like, they're fully aware that they should have gone through some type, at least started a process with the select board, they haven't yet.
Oh.
So, my recommendation at the moment is that, I mean, we have to continue this, there's, there, we, we can't, it's possible the whole thing could change, it's possible the whole thing could change.
So, I, I think there needs to be some very strong, is the whole ownership of this really with the Z B A? Or do we have you as town planner, does anybody as town engineer?
The select board, so this is a select board issue, they would definitely defer to staff when they wanted. I think this is, they, they would do that and they would probably go to DPW engineering and planning for their opinion, but it's their, it's their, uh, charge. It's not the zoning, the zoning board, the zoning board can't authorize a change to the street.
And their staff representative is the town manager. Is this the message really that should be you and you, Beth and the town manager should be, um.
And DPW.
And DP, okay, put the whole team in, um, getting back to the, getting a message developed. I guess the select board as the street commissioners, are they, um, they're the ones who have to actually sign it but should just, just not be going any further.
It should be shut down.
So, so that's, so what I'm, what I'm saying is that, you can call it shut down, you can.
We're just a recommendation on other stuff, is, Heather, I'd like to talk about how ugly it is, but, um.
I was actually just talking about how ugly that islandy thing is, and if we're talking about North Main Street and a master plan, like, there's a lot of potential, there's something more interesting at that intersection, it seems short sighted to change it just for this property and not think about what we really want that intersection to be.
Yeah.
That's exactly.
The traffic is, is pedestrianized here.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that could be better about it.
Yeah, you were good about.
To- total, and, and that's, that, that, my point was that to not have some type of concurrent process with the select board going, it's possible, like you're saying, that this could completely, not completely, but it could change, it could change the configuration of the site, let alone, forget, forget, forget,
That's right.
forget what would happen here, but something that could happen here would make the building change, so, that's why, I, I, I feel the application is premature, that, that, um, whether, you don't necessarily have to say that it's completely dead, what I would say that it's, it should be continued until there's at least some feedback by the select board, there.
No, but that, I mean, Beth is saying you could, I'm, wait.
No, I think it should be pulled, right.
Yeah.
Not continued.
It should be continued.
I'm confused, because Beth is saying that you, it's fine to drive in this way and turn right, and then come out and turn right.
Cause it's safer, cause it's safer at the moment, yeah.
Right, but, so they can still have a project there, I mean, I'm not, I don't like the project.
They would still need, no, they would still need, I would imagine.
Okay, you drive.
You need curb cuts and everything for the stuff there.
So, when we met, um, like, we met last week with the applicant and then.
Cause there's a lot of traffic that goes through there, a lot.
Beth, Beth, could you come to the table, please?
Um, I met last week with the applicant and their traffic engineer.
Can you please name the applicant?
Um.
Who, whom did you meet?
It's Mur- it's Murri- it's not Bob Murray, but it's his company, Murray.
Oh, who, I know, but there'd be real.
His name is Mi- it's his nephew, Michael Murray.
Michael Murray, thank you.
So that, was the person who was there, and they've hired Tool Design Group, who I think is, the town works with, so I'm glad that's who they're using, but. So, we met out there and we talked about, um, them looking kind of more holistically at that area in terms of circulation and parking and pedestrian.
So it would be appropriate, though, to, see, I don't know how we, as a planning board, have a role here, but this is a gateway to our center business district that we've worked so hard on, so.
Gateway.
If you're having this message and it's all about circulation, but to me, this is all part of the conversation about what's happening.
Yeah, so my message was not all about circulation, because I knew that you, um, would want to be taking a more holistic look at this area,
Yeah, cause the appearance.
Yeah.
because it's frankly a nice.
It is, it is.
Nice, there's a whole lot of opportunity.
Right, so, so.
And I, I think most of you are probably not aware of how much traffic goes through there, there's a lot.
Yeah, well, that's an issue, right, so that was one of the things we brought up, is to, ways in which they can make it clear that it's not a through lane for people who just don't wanna sit at the light, right, so that's part of, part of what needs to be looked at, but, um. So what, I recommended to them was that they needed to get on the select board agenda as soon as possible, and I expected, to be honest, that we'd have something this week, based on the conversation we had.
This is exactly what we recommend, seven weeks ago.
So, but hang on, man, so I'm just concerned that, and I know I am confident that you had the idea and then the idea, but how does this broader interest go to the select boards, since they're really the ones in the driver's seat, to make sure that this just doesn't.
I think we send a letter.
That's what I think.
I think the planning board sends a letter, uh, you can send your own letter as your own, as a town planner, but I think the planning board takes a position on that in the.
Right, there will be a hearing, I would imagine the select board will have a hearing on this.
I know, I think we still send a letter.
But I mean, how do we all have a stand?
Yeah, no, so they will have a hearing and they will ask for comment, and the board, the board will write a memo and they'll be part, it'll be part of a hearing.
We can still write them a memo before then, um, I'm not sure.
Saying this is coming, this is what we know, and this is what we are, our concerns are.
I'm not sure, yeah, I, I, I think that we would want to, um, I haven't really heard a coherent discussion of what our concerns are, other than we don't like what's there.
Oh, I thought mine were pretty coherent, in terms of the pedestrian safety of that intersection, the traffic, the turn, the blind turn coming out of that.
Yes.
Landscaping.
And retaining the park, and retaining the parking for the businesses.
Well. Well, the, the question is, are we, if we're gonna talk about the overall design, or are we trying to talk about this particular property?
Well, so, this particular property is asking, is going to be going to the select board to request that they get rights to use this triangular piece to access their property.
To, 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 just to be really quick, what they're gonna propose is basically lopping off a portion of the end of it.
Which is the select board's jurisdiction, and what I would like to do is get ahead of that and let the select board.
Yeah. Right.
Know that.
We, we want a bigger vision.
We want a bigger vision before they give away and say that that is acceptable.
Yeah, we don't want to give away the store.
Okay.
I would take a step back, and I would say, if you're gonna write a letter now, that your letter should say, this project is moving forward, and because of the changes that are being proposed here, they should be required to come before the select board at a public hearing to discuss changes and mitigation that they wanna, may, that should, should be made to be made at this location as part of their project. So I think I would take a step back and say, not only, you know, what you wanna see, but that the select board should take this on as a, as an issue.
I think that's a good way, that's a good way to put it, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Beth, can you write that letter for us, and, what, what she said?
And then they have a kid, then they have a kid.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, can you do that?
It's on tape.
It's on tape, so they.
Okay, so, um, so right now, what they're, the only thing that they require, I mean, they, could they simply not use things as existing?
So, again, could is not the question, in terms of whether it's the safest boat, makes the most sense from an access in and out.
Right. I understand, but, but.
Standpoint is a different question, right? I, I think in theory, yes, they could go in and get a, um, you know, put a curb cut in there and use the, have traffic flow there and take it right into their parking lot.
Right, so, I'm, I'm just trying to understand if there is a requirement. Going before the select board to redo this, is that required in order to move this project forward, or is that something we would like?
It's a gray area, right, so if they're making changes, they would certainly be required to go before the select board.
Right, but if all they did was put in a curb cut.
Then that's a gray area.
It's a gray area?
I, I think it's a gray area.
I mean.
I mean, the select board doesn't issue curb cut permits.
Right, but DPW, but DPW.
That's approved as part of the ZBA.
Yeah, yeah, so if, if, if all they need is a curb cut, and legally they're allowed to get a curb cut.
But I think what Brian said is that they, they've already looked, they've already said that they wanna make changes, so that, right there, triggers.
Okay, if they've already said they want to make changes.
Yeah, they wanna cut off certain, I don't know how many feet, but they wanna cut off certain.
Right, right, they want to do that, but do they need to do that? I just wanna, I wanna make sure that there is.
It's awful.
Leverage, in the sense that, you know, that we understand that they have to go before the select.
Well, the, the problem is, what you don't have in front of you, and this to me is where the ZBA application is deficient, is the traffic component of this analysis, right, and I don't know if that's specifically called out as a requirement, is a site plan review that they're going for, or is this a special?
There's a special.
It's both, it's both.
So, it's, it's listed as, it's, it's not listed as site plan review.
Well, but you said it.
I, I, I think it's site plan review, because it's a.
It's been more than two years, right?
Well, new u- no, it's been a site plan review because it's new use on, on vacant land, yeah.
Right, but it's two years from previous use, which was a, a single, was, is a business, I think.
Regardless, are, are they required to submit a traffic analysis as part of the submission requirements?
I think it's a May.
It's a May.
Yeah, like they may be required, meaning.
Okay, well, this is, this is a.
They're required.
In my opinion, this is an area where it's not, it's not as amazing as it should, yeah.
Right, okay.
You can't do a traffic thing until you figure out what is actually gonna be allowed through the select board, but if you're touching the parking, which they are impacting.
If they take.
No, I, I don't, I think that's, I don't think that's right, I think they should go to the select board with what, with their request, and the select board should use that as a starting point, right?
As a starting point, right, and bring, and bring others in.
If they're looking to make modifications, that's a point, uh, not only to make it useful for their project, but to make, to improve it overall for all users.
Right, because this, right, and if we wanted to send them a letter to that effect, we could just say that the planning board views this as a, it's a very important, uh, parcel.
And Jalen needs to speak on that also.
Yeah, it's a, it's a wider conversation, for sure.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but to DEAB's point, they could just drive in there and turn and do the project, like, we're just, no, because they're resident.
Hopefully, yeah, hopefully the ZBA would say that this is not safe and adequate access to the site.
Right, right, there is definitely, we can come in under that, but that would be.
That's true.
And they know that.
And that would be.
I mean, the applicant knows that it's not a safe, it's not, it's currently not a safe place to be driving into in either direction.
Okay.
But then, there's still, it's a petition that's got a date on it, of Monday, December seventeenth, so.
It's before, yeah.
I'm concerned that we don't have it coming up, although it's expected it's on their docket, isn't it?
Of course.
Well, I think, I think, i- in my opinion, what you should do is rate the areas where there's deficiencies and the, not, you know, and the things that need to be addressed before you can even really take a look at it, and number one is traffic, how are they going to address the traffic flow in and out of that driveway, and what modifications are they gonna make to that, to that area for circulation improvements?
Yeah, traffic circulation.
Why is this actually coming in as a special permit?
Um, it's coming in as a special permit because of, um, eight unit, eight, it's eight units above.
Two.
You can do four by right, and it's a, but they, but they do up to eight with a special permit.
And it is also site plan review, as it came to the CBA, the CBA has a, a site plan.
It does, yeah, it has, it's site plan review because it's a, it's a new use on vacant land, right?
The petitioner seeks site plan review in accordance with section nine point five point one, et cetera.
And why, once again, why can't they keep the existing access point to that lot, you, is the DCR land, they have it?
Oh, you're saying here?
Yeah.
There's a big easement on the right.
No, no, they can't use this, I think.
I, I don't. With, with their current design, they can't fit that driveway, they, they need a bigger driveway than obviously what's serviced, uh, you know, I don't know, if it's a single family or two-family, so they can't fit the, they can't fit their, not to say that they can make a smaller building, but they can't fit their building and that driveway, could, could they make a smaller building and put a driveway on the left-hand side? Sure, but then, you'd have to, as DEAB said, go around.
Yeah, cause.
Another reason why we thought it's premature.
If they, if they provide surface parking on the, over the easement, which makes sense, right, from a site layout perspective, then you're kinda going around the building, which is.
Um, and the other side's to access, though, the reason they wanna cut that back is so you can turn off of Main Street right into their drive,
Correct.
which is gonna back up skilling.
Well, so, I, I would say, it's premature to speculate what they're gonna do until they have their traffic engineer review it, because their traffic engineer is gonna look at those turning movements and say, is that not even a safe turning movement to make? So, I mean, maybe that's what they wanted to do three weeks ago, or four weeks ago, or whatever, but until their traffic engineer has evaluated it, we may not land where they thought they were gonna land to start with.
Okay, um, my eye is on the clock.
Yeah.
And we are moving, so, I think we've covered the traffic.
Well, it's, how are they going to address the traffic and circulation issues related to the existing island and the sewer easement?
Right.
It's unclear.
It's unclear.
And you would, I think you would say that, um, if there are modifications being proposed, that needs to go before the select board.
Yeah, and this is a, this is a safety issue, so, um, okay, um, I, I also noted, there's, it seems to be an awful lot of parking spaces.
Nineteen.
Yes, thank you, I got approximately the same.
I think they have one extra, uh, just one, so they, they're required to have the.
Sixteen.
Yes, or, well, I think.
Well, then the other was retail, I guess.
Right, so it's, it's for two hundred square, they need a spot for every two hundred square feet, which is.
Some reason it landed on a plan.
So, is that, is, so, you figured out that's the appropriate amount of parking?
Yeah, I think they're, they're giving one, or potentially two more, I can.
Cause it just seems like if they could reduce the parking, then they wouldn't need so much space.
There's a lot, but I, this is, I, this is the whole problem, I think, there are tons of problems with GBD two and three, and when we catch our breath in January, I think we gotta get it going.
But, okay, so, um, why don't, why don't we try to.
That's what we should be doing, a town meeting.
Negotiate that, I'm not sure they care that, if we were to say we'd be happy to see less parking, because sometimes they want it anyway, uh, for their condos.
It's, you know.
It struck me as high.
It's, yeah, so.
They're not big units, they don't need every unit with a, two parking spaces.
No, but that's the requirement.
I, I agree, um, I, I understand, I'm just saying, could we negotiate that down with them, but I'm not sure they care.
Yeah. If it gives them.
I mean, there's marketability of two spots per unit, so, I mean, that's what it is, so that's where the sixteen is,
Right.
and then it's a space for two hundred square feet, which I think gets them to eighteen spaces.
I assume that, um, now we, again, it's the ZBA, not us, that they could waive the parking.
Yeah. Well, why don't we, why don't we work on trying to come to a decision on this right now, so, I.
I'm concerned that this could, that there's some chance it would go forward, would it, or you seem pretty sure, Brian, that they, or Beth, you met with the, uh, their lawyer or something?
I didn't, I wasn't in that preliminary meeting that Brian and Brian were in, but.
Yeah, that was pre-application.
I, I met with them and their, with the applicant, or his representative, and their traffic engineer.
You met with Murray and, or Junior, whatever cousin, or.
Yeah.
Whatever, anyway, yeah.
So, so, regardless of, of, of the side meetings.
I'm responding to you, because I'm not sure if we have to take two positions, one, if, if, what we would like to see, which is that there's, um, some meeting with the select board, but I'm also wondering, do we need to have a position in case the ZBA decides they're just plowing ahead, I don't know.
We have to vote, because we don't have another time to vote on this.
Cause we need to have a position.
Yeah, it's on.
We need to have a position, so, I, I mean, we could have a position that we feel that the, the traffic circulate, it's premature, because the traffic circulation is an obvious safety issue which hasn't been addressed, and then we, I think we could continue to talk about the other parts of this, namely the design.
Right.
The fact that it completely ignores all of the historic buildings to the, to the left of it.
Yeah.
I mean, those are, I mean, and I think we can go through and come to a decision tonight as to whether we approve this project.
Oh, well, I think it's pretty, I would make a recommendation, and then we can still flush it out, but if we're unfavorable action, but.
Well, so why don't we move to that, because I really, it's already nine thirty.
Fine, so I move unfavorable action.
Recommend it.
Recommend it, recommend.
Okay, just remember Brian is not as fast as Liz.
No, that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
See, it's not, I stopped.
Well, I second that.
Well, no, you have to say, you don't wanna say based on anything?
You have to base it on something.
Right, well, we, who can.
Well, that's gonna be a long motion.
That's gonna be a long motion, see, based on.
It's okay.
For the following.
You would say, based on the lack of traffic and circulation, um, work that had, that needs to be done prior to.
The insufficient.
There's no, there's no traffic study that was submitted with their application, and there's clear.
Insufficient.
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 Uh, parking and circulation.
Parking and circulation.
Unfavorable action based on the lack of a traffic study.
No.
No.
Traffic and circulation.
Traffic study and push it through, it's, there's a lot more to it.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we slow down, sit back and get the words right?
Is it road design? Is it road design?
It's, it's, we want to say something about, um.
As the road is currently designed, it does not.
Well, it's not currently, it's as in their plan.
As proposed.
As proposed.
But they're, they're not, they can't touch this, they can't design the street, so it's their proposal is.
It would, so it sounds like still it's recommending unfavorable action based on the lack of a traffic and circulation study.
No, no, no.
As well as adhering to the select board.
I've got the words. The proposed plan does not take into account traffic circulation and pedestrian safety due to the intricate design of the intersection.
Complexity.
Confounding.
And the relating complex. And the relating complex.
The confounding design of the Skilling's main intersection.
And lake. Yes, three, lake, main, Skilling turns to lake.
Right, right, main, Skilling's main and lake.
Intersection.
Intersection, okay.
Semi-colon.
Somewhere.
It also creates, yeah.
Yeah, but, but I would do more than say pedestrian safety, there's a, what, by, um, reducing the size of the, the northern tip of the island, how's that?
Well, is that actually in the plans in front of us, or is that?
That's not from.
They, they have said that, that, I mean, they, they, it's not in the plans, but that's what they have told me that they wanted to.
I think they're trying to push it through without doing that, right?
Yeah.
Uh, we, we don't have that in front of us.
Because right now what they're showing is the island staying, that island staying at it, so what that is doing is creating an unsafe pedestrian situation. So we do want to include that it is creating, as currently is creating, an unsafe pedestrian.
So.
It's currently presented.
Not that I'm, um, disputing what you're saying, but there is, with the new bike way project, there is a new crosswalk that has been installed here. So people could come down here and cross here.
They have, yeah, but, yeah, they have to, they have to turn.
So there's a new, um, you can come down this sidewalk, and there's a new, a new ramp that's installed here and a new crosswalk to get you to this, uh, cut in the, um, so that's the, that's the safe pedestrian. Yeah, except. ZBA accessible pedestrian paths to get through that intersection.
What they're hoping is people will turn right.
It'll be pretty well done, well signed, signed, cause it's otherwise it's going to be a problem.
What's that? The way they have it is they're hoping people turn right off of main and get into their drive and loop around, or they'll come through the thoroughfare, so they'll be coming at two different directions at their drive.
That seems really easy.
Right, but he, my, my point was people don't have to cross here now because now there's a, um.
She's saying we can't say pedestrian safety because now there's a safe crosswalk.
Right, and.
Well, there's still pedestrian safety because.
At the other end, yeah.
There, there is, it's confusing for how you get into that driveway, and, um, I still think pedestrian safety is an issue, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not disputing that that's an issue, I'm just saying that this is no longer, um, the way, the way for people to get here, because now we have an accessible route here.
It's actually accessible because it has never been handicap accessible.
Was modified as part of the bike way project, because this was the accessible route for the bike way project.
What is a handicap accessible?
Yeah, she said.
There's a handicap ramp here, a new crosswalk, and there's a curb cut opening here.
Right, and if there's a sign that says that.
Okay, can I, can I ask the board, can I ask the board to move to the rest of this motion? We can discuss. We're gonna leave the words pedestrian safety in. Somebody was going to put a semicolon in and do something after the semicolon, but I think we've dealt with.
Pedestrian safety's in.
It's in, okay, so that's the first issue.
I, I would not belabor it, but I would add that, that any modification needs to go through the select board so that it's clear to the ZBA
Right.
that it's not just.
Right.
Providing a circulation study that if there's markings, there's an extra step.
Yeah, that, that will be, okay, so we'll put that at the end of our motion.
Any modifications to the street layout would need to be approved by the select.
Prior to review by the ZBA.
Right, and so, that, that'll go after, as a footnote at the end of the motion. So our first part of the motion is.
Yeah, could you see what you have so far?
I have, the proposed plan does not take into account traffic circulation, pedestrian sa, and pedestrian safety due to the confounding design of the Skilling's, excuse me, main and lake intersection. That's our first objection.
Okay, we're going to talk about design?
Period, and then.
And now, and now we're going to get to number two.
I think the design review committee, committee.
Got it.
Got it pretty good.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Do we have that printed, or is that just in, you know?
It's there, and it's, it's in the table.
Uh, yeah, so I think what we can do is, um, yes, here it is, I remember them saying. Um, what they said is one way of doing it, but, um, I think we can go and, and put a couple of sentences on, sentences in on design.
Yes.
Further.
Certainly, um, does not respond to its neighboring context.
Correct, I agree.
Does not respond, I don't want to copy their words, but they said it so well.
It's also scale.
Bring buildings' scale and design aesthetics. A E S T H E T X. There was a cons, I mean, so it's pretty big, that's the scale, um. Is that it?
Well, the designer review committee, I'm reading everything they've got.
Right.
The, um, well, you could, I don't know, we could just say we endorse all of the designer review committees.
Every point.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would say.
Okay, so, let's just say it does not respond to the neighbor building's scale and design aesthetics, we, um.
Yeah.
We, um, endorse the, um.
Board.
The unf, the unfavorable report of the DRC. Okay, that was, so we have two things.
And I would just say, and then finally, and then something about, and as the planning board, um, with permitting authority over the CBD, uh, we take a special inter, or particular interest in this gateway building.
We take particular interest in this. Yes, gateway, this gateway structure.
Inconsistent with our goals for the CBD.
Right, the.
And the neighborhood.
Right, so we can also say.
To Winchester.
That the proposed project is inconsistent with the, um.
Objectives of the center business district.
Thank you, objectives of the center business district to which this property is a gateway.
So years ago, and Maureen, you'll remember that you guys had Larry Bluestone.
Yep.
Do content plans.
We certainly did.
For this area, so I don't know if you want to reference that in any way, I mean, I don't, I think, I think he actually brought the.
We could add that.
Yeah.
You can add more when we get to the select board.
Well, well.
He brought the buildings out into the parking area, so it's in one of his schemes, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, there's, yeah.
I think, I think that will do for now, and if we're, if we are, if we are sitting down with the board, I think that would be a very good thing for us to bring out.
They don't have any, they don't have any break between the building and the street.
Are you saying the parcels got extended all the way to the?
Oh, no, they do have.
There were a couple of different options, but that was one of them, yeah.
Okay, um, so right now what we have in front of us is we, um, we vote for unfavorable action based on, one, the proposal, proposed plan does not take into account traffic circulation and pedestrian safety due to the confounding design of the Skilling's main and lake intersection. Number two, does not respond to the neighboring building's scale and design aesthetics. We endorse the unfavorable report of the DRC. Number three, the proposed project is inconsistent.
It's not an unfavorable report, it's a report for unfavorable action.
What?
The report is just.
It's just the minutes.
You don't want it to be a modify report, just rewrite that.
So that the report isn't negative?
The report is pretty negative on this thing.
No, no.
We endorse the findings, we endorse, we endorse the findings.
Design review.
Of the design review committee.
With respect to this property.
Okay, I think that's implied. And last, the proposed project is inconsistent with the objections of the center business district to which this property is a gateway, to which.
And then you would say any modification to the street layout would need to be approved by the select board.
Right.
And then historical commission, I, is also in our packets, and they hit it spot on.
Okay.
I think they did.
They were talking about the, how, the resource across the street.
Um, it's surrounded actually by a lot of historical buildings.
Yes.
Um, the one at the corner of Lake and Main is eighteen eighty. Those two houses that are directly next to it are nineteen thirties.
Is this known as Cutter Village?
Uh, actually.
Guess, oh, because of that cutter.
What else?
Cutter Village was the apartment building.
Yeah, there's a, but there's a Cutter House right next door, so, yeah, I thought that one up in North Main was the Cutter Village.
Yeah, one's nineteen hundred and one's nineteen thirty, the two little houses next door. Um, and then also the one where the insurance salt marshes, that's actually a historical building as well.
That thing? Huh.
Uh, the town pantry is done in the nineteen seventies, um, the Toscanos, where Toscanos is, and the service centers, those are actually historical garages from the nineteen twenties, which are very rare, to still be intact, very cool.
They're very cool.
But they do reflect a lot of the history of, of their.
Of, 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 of North, of North Main Street.
Yeah, but they also add to North Main Street too, so, um.
You can say it does not respond to the neighboring historical context, so we have, we have.
I think we just agree, that we agree with the historical.
Right, so why don't we, why don't we add it to number two?
So we endorse the report of the DRC and of the Winchester reports.
We endorse the reports, not the findings, the reports of the DRC and the historical commission. And then, um, I think we can, so we're going to change that to say, does not respond to the neighboring building's scale, design, and historical context.
If acceptable with the planning board, can we add unanimously support? The findings?
Well, we're going to vote unanimously.
We're going to vote, but I'd like to put it in the word. And to do that, we have to put it in the word and we have to vote for it.
We got to vote first.
Because it's very, the planning board is, maybe unanimously have taken a vote, um, the historical commission's unanimous, the DCRs.
Six oh, seven oh.
Yeah.
We're, we're going to be unanimous, but we can't put it in the motion because we haven't voted yet.
Oh, you know what, also, um, in addition to endorsing the report of the historical commission, Heather Hannan's ahead of me reading this, um, at the time when they held their demolition delay hearing and did agree to the immediate demolition, it says that additionally, the owners made, who was, of course, this
Previous owner.
Turn owner, right, now it's the prior owner, but the owners made a commitment to the historical commission that any new development at the site would be compatible with the surviving surrounding historic resources, that it would reflect.
I was at that table.
You were there, okay.
I was there.
So I think somehow, maybe just copy paste the, um, just the board notes, because we don't have to just write an emotion.
Right.
Right, well, let's.
Catch all this in a motion.
But the whole paragraph is about materials and move.
It's really important. It is, it is important, but.
It's important, but it's already in here.
We're endorsing.
We're endorsing their finding. I mean, I could go through and.
We can put it in the.
That's stronger than everything else, it's not a one-off.
Well, I don't know, I think that the DRCs are pretty strong too, so.
I was just pointing this out to Maureen, because they had promised that they would do it a certain way.
Yes.
That's important.
Well.
But it's also now, be, back then it was not, our zoning was not the way it is now. Now our zoning.
It's also, I don't know if it matters, and it's a different owner, I, I don't know, I don't know how that.
It doesn't, the, 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 the promises of the prior owner are not carried forward unless they're written in a contract.
The things that we say around the land.
Yeah. In the, yeah, somehow in the deed.
So.
Well, they would be in the minutes.
But it doesn't matter, it doesn't have any, there's, there's no legal binding, there's.
Say it doesn't matter, we can say it matters to us, right?
Wait, what, we're saying it matters to us.
Expecting something like this. I, I also think it's good that the historical commission gives them reference of what is acceptable.
We can certainly ref, when we, when I, when we write the decision, we can certainly reference key points and attach the entire, um, meeting minutes for DRC and WHC.
But they already are going to get these.
Yes.
I just think it's redundant.
That's okay.
I don't, I'm happy to.
And this, and this, and this instance, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. Ordinarily, I don't like to have a lot of repetition, but in this particular instance, I think it's.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't, so, just so we can get out of here before I fall asleep, um, which, I mean.
It's quite powerful, and it's, I know.
I, I know, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a powerful paragraph, but I don't know how it fits in here. We endorse the report of the DRC and, and.
So, and then it's, I have been involved with like entire one page, I think this board has even people sitting at this table where you write more than just the mem, the mem, the, what, the, um, the motion and the vote, you can certainly, you can write, it's a letter, yeah.
I don't disagree with that, I just, if that's all we're putting in, I am not going to be sitting here writing a page-long response because, for this property. It's just, this isn't going to happen in my term because I don't have time to do that. So if we want text in here, we're just going to dump it in.
Well, I would say the planning board, you know, furthermore, the planning board notes in the, um, letter of the historical commission, that, and then you could just cut and, copy and paste, the owners made a commitment.
Okay.
To the Winchester Historical Commission, and, and just that, that paragraph that includes the two to three-story massing, the wood or brick materials, and gabled or other forms of pitch roof.
So we will include that, not as part of the motion, but as part of the additional comment.
Correct.
So the motion as it stands, hopefully for the last time, so we can vote on this, proposed plan does not take into account traffic circulation and pedestrian safety due to the confounding design of the Skilling's main and lake intersection, does not respond to the neighboring building's scale, design, and historical context, we endorse the reports of the DRC and the historical commission, proposed project is inconsistent with the objectives of the center business district to which this property is a gateway, and then any modification, Brian, you have that sentence.
To the street layout would need to be approved by the select board.
Whoa, and somewhere in the board notes.
Prior to the ZBA's review.
Street layout must be approved.
Prior to any, prior to any final decision by the ZBA.
Yeah, yes. Um, engineering, Brian picked up a nice thing about the gate, trying to access, uh, the, the road at the high school, right?
There's a parking, right?
They have a gate on the back of their lot that is then going into the parking, um, which you can't see here.
Yeah, they're covered.
Um, but in their plans, he picked up that they have a gate trying to access, um, school's land.
That should be closed off.
It should not be included. Um, I, so with that also, I also agree with all the engineering's findings as well, including the gate issue.
Where did you find this? Did I miss this?
Ryan wrote one, it was in our packet.
Oh.
Um, talking about FEMA regulatory flooding.
Not in the, um, it was not in the, it was in the packet that got sent to you this weekend, not, not in the table.
Um, the water connections, sewer connections need to be checked, right, for the site. They should be, I think they actually need to be replaced.
Yeah.
Those are probably the lead ones that everyone's trying to.
Okay, so are we, do we want to throw that in here, or are we fine with, I mean, the engineering report is, um, here it is, I remember this one. Do we need to include anything from the engineering report, or are we set with this motion?
Well, the, one of the big, why I was bringing that up is because the adequacy of the proposed screening and buffering, they currently don't have any towards the field. Except for that they have a big fence.
And all the arborvitae, it's just like they.
There was a comment about that though.
Ring of arborvitae.
Well, right, but, um, there are some.
They have comments about changing the trees in the DRC one.
Yeah, specifically the arborvitae.
Trees that go above the height of the fence in the back.
They, yeah, they don't have any on the back of their.
Oh, this says that at the back.
No, they do, they have arborvitae's in the back along the fence.
Friends and the arborvitae's.
And then the DRC is basically saying it's the wrong type of tree because you don't want, you want the coverage above the fence, you don't need.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so that's, so.
Okay, the gate was my biggest.
But it's still endorsing the report, I have anything to say, unanimously endorse the reports of the engineering department, DRC, and the WHC.
Yep.
Okay, so we're going to.
Engineering on that.
Okay, so we're gonna put that.
Engineering department, DRC, and the WHC.
Glad you picked up that gate.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, do we have a second on this motion? Do we have a first?
You need a first.
Do we have a first on this motion?
So moved.
Okay, Betsy's made the motion, second?
Second.
Maureen seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It apparently is unanimous.
With A and Rs.
Somebody go to Monday night's meeting.
Okay, so let's, so we now have two A and Rs. Um, the first A and R is Eleven Canal Street. Um.
I mean, I could do that if you want.
So I didn't, so Canal, as we all know, Eleven Canal Street was purchased in the hopes of developing it, and I believe this is the owner's recording of current conditions.
It's not for sale though, isn't it?
I, I don't know anything about that, I'm just looking at the clock.
I don't know what, what is going on with this.
This was the, the same situation that's, yes, so in, um.
Uh, the, well, the zoning as it relates to height.
Use.
Dimensionals, but.
Use.
Oh, use rather, not dimension.
It freezes use, not dimensions. It's the same thing that we just did, or that we didn't do technically for eighteen, eighteen to twenty Clark, as well as one other property.
It's just trying to freeze in the use, he's got two years.
Freezing the use, three years.
Three years, freezing of the use. And so we don't have to sign it, we can just ignore it like we did.
You could not make a vote as well.
We could also not make a vote.
Meaning that by, if you're not going to sign it, you might as well not make a vote.
Right, we can just let this go through because it has nothing.
I think it's already gone through, to be honest, it just hasn't been stamped by the clerk, meaning that the date, the date of, of application was, it's got to be almost twenty, it's like, I think tomorrow might be twenty-one days, so.
Yeah, I remember the poll was about it, it was during the morning.
Well, they had to file it prior to town meeting.
All right, what do we got here?
So what we have here is Glen Road.
This is forty to forty-four Glen Road.
And it looks like they're just tweaking it.
Right, so.
Why they're moving it?
Probably to make room.
It has to do with a driveway, um, that is shared between these two parcels.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I do have a pen, um, and I think there, there's going to be a sale at some point soon, so they have to get it lined up, but there's no new lots being created as part of this, yeah.
I just couldn't tell when I looked at the street view.
So, I'm going to move that we endorse the A and R.
Take a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, why don't you get the pen?
Just going, Deap, to the.
All right, so the next one we have is, we have planning board budget.
Yes.
Okay, so.
I don't think I've got what I probably had last.
Brian, thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
Thanks, Beth.
So, um, Brian, uh, our town manager, Lisa Long, and assistant town manager, Mark Too Good, and I had a conference call on Monday where we talked about the budget.
Yep.
Um, the three things that are, I don't know how many there are, but the things of import that came out of that discussion were, um, so the town manager is, is going to be creating the override and non-override budgets, so we are not creating that. So we are not creating that. What we're going to do, what we are going to do is present her with a list of our needs. And to, um, prioritize them in terms of long or short-term needs, medium and long-term. And also to address them, address why, um, we need to provide a justification for them. Let's use easy words. So we had, um, in front of you, hopefully somewhere, is the proposed.
This budget sheet.
This budget sheet.
Do you have a new one?
Yes, it should be in front of me.
I'm just trying to find it.
Where is the packet?
It's, it's in today, it's in your.
It's a one-page that was in today.
It was on your, it was on the table.
Now, I better try and figure out where that went.
Okay.
I'll put it up here.
Yeah, if you could, because I know I had gone through it pretty well.
The key things about this budget are, um, we're looking at a, an additional planner?
How much for the planner?
So we had said seventy-five based upon a fifty-five thousand dollar salary.
It's, it's in the upper right corner.
With roughly twenty, it's roughly about twenty to twenty-two thousand dollars for the overhead for health insurance and something like that. So, yeah, but it would be a, um, a, most likely a newly graduated planner.
Yeah, I was thinking about fifty, that's why I was.
That's, so, yeah, it's fifty to fifty-five is what we were thinking.
That makes sense, but.
But we need seventy-five to, to cover fifty to fifty-five.
Right.
Exactly.
Um, and then we had, um, it's a, it's unclear. It's unclear whether a part-time, where a part-time grant writer would be situated because there are obviously a lot of other benefits that the town would have, not just for planning-related grants, but, I mean, everything from the police department to fire department, I mean, everywhere.
Everywhere, everywhere.
Newtons Falls under their planning department, so I was one of them.
Right. I mean.
Their grant writer is inside their planning.
Writer here for a few years. Mark didn't mention that.
No.
Well, well, Lisa's very much, it seems to be in favor of the grant writer, understands.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm in favor.
So, so I don't think we have to debate where it's going to fall.
Right.
We should, we're just going to put it in our budget, and if we get, if it's ours, it's ours, or actually if they're ours, they're ours.
Um, and then the zoning enforcement officer, this was a little more unclear for the manager because she was like, well, okay, so who's actually doing this job now? What, how much portion of, you know, the, the building department is, is dedicated to this? Brian, are you doing any, you know, and I was like, I'm kind of in the Center Business District. I would probably be like, that's what happens with the Center Business District.
She also pointed out that, once you spoke with the building department, this was not on their list of pe- personnel that they were looking for. I don't know what they asked for, no idea. Um, so we have to, if we want an extra zoning enforcement officer, we need to justify why another zoning enforcement officer, rather than say, just another.
Building.
Building department person who, so those are the things we need to justify.
Because they need more admin, I mean, they need two more, I mean, they probably need one and a half more people. So they have a, they have, in terms of, um, non-inspectors, they have one and a half employees, and they need probably three employees. They probably need another one and a half people.
Of course, there is a job being done down there, and the question is, is the right, maybe if some of those hours were taken away, there would be more hours for building commissioners' work under that.
Sure.
And then, so, I'm sorry, it's a little bit fungible. I don't know what was.
It, well, I mean, the point is, we need to make a, an argument for why.
Why we need another person.
Why a CEO is the appropriate place to put the money. And I think we can make that argument because we know that the CEO will handle some of Brian's duties, at least in terms of interfacing with the public. Um, certainly we have, you know, there are indications that we don't have enough people doing it because we know there are things missed, they slip through after things are being built. Um, and it would offload some duties from the building department so they could concentrate. So I think we have a strong argument.
Yeah.
And you will make it stronger.
Yeah, I think maybe it might be beneficial if I go ahead and have a conversation with the town manager and kind of go through exactly where, um, we can strengthen by having a zoning enforcement officer. And where we, we, if we got a part-time and zoning enforcement officer, and they took on affidavits of permit costs, which we don't do in Winchester, um, that alone would cover the zoning enforcement officer's salary.
I think we need this in writing. By all means, discuss that with her, but we need to come up with a, a memo. So this all has to go down in writing because she's going to be getting this information from everywhere, and so we want to make sure it's on.
If you have a clear, either we could talk, why don't we just talk?
I think.
You and me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
About, um, 'cause, yeah, I, I mean, I think the, the, the full-time planner and the grant writer, I think I've been documenting what I've been doing the past, it's been now five months, that every day I'm documenting almost to the half hour of what I'm doing. So I think there's, there's enough, there's enough ammo for saying why we need a fifty-five K planner. I think there is, there's easy reasons to say why we're spending twenty-eight thousand dollars on a grant writer considering, considering they could easily get us that much money in a year guaranteed, right? I mean, that's.
Right.
The historical commission got fifteen in their grant.
Right, and, and, and.
So, so because we, we, I think, okay, so if you and Brian could get together and talk about.
The CEO in terms of making a case for that.
By the way, I want to remind you Lexington has a separate person.
Right.
Right.
Well, several of the, where there's been a lot more other places that have development pressure similar to us, they, they've, they've had this for a while.
Right, I think, I think we can, we, we already have the data to show what other.
Communities.
Communities do in terms of their staffing. We can put that in there. Um, I think.
The benefits of why you would do it is what she needs to hear.
Yeah, she needs, she wants to.
She wants to know what's on the ground, why, why, why do we need it, and then why do we need this rather than something else?
And can it pay for itself? I mean, that's the other thing is she's looking at the budget saying, if we bring these people in, will they actually be?
Generate additional revenue.
Right.
Well, I think if anything, they would prevent potential legal issues is really what, what a CEO would do.
But there's, but, you know. They, they can, they can do both. I mean, I think there's, there's, we can argue both.
I think there's a couple, there's a couple of reasons there.
So let's, um, so I think we're, those are the three staffing people.
Right, I'll, I'll, okay, I'm going to talk with Heather about that.
And the, the, the planner, I know, I kind of, um, I don't know where, how you feel about, if we get a planner, we need them to help you do some of your stuff, and then there's the whole bit of doing, um, economic and housing development.
That's clearly, if I had to pick, in terms of we were going to have an assistant planner, that we should be focusing on, yes, economic and housing, housing and economic development.
And is that something that you think the, the new planner would do, or is that something you would like to do?
I think that I would want to hire, if I could, someone who's interested specifically in housing and economic development, and we would do that together.
Okay, that's, that's cool. I just want to, I, I recall when we were having our discussion on Monday that.
So, that's what you're saying, but I'm saying strike that that's an area where you have developed quite a bit of knowledge in housing and I, I think economic development. I'm thinking that the, well, I would want a planner, but, um, and it's going to be a planner, but I would think that the area where we're, our, as we get staff reviews and you go through, you have your matrix and everything, and it's strong, but the area of urban design or architecture. So somebody who's planning background, I know what the Tufts planning degree is. It has, um, nothing that's design-related or.
No, you have to go out of your way to do that, yes.
It's not there. I've seen it.
It's true.
I've looked at it. So there are different kinds of, um, planning degrees, and a planner whose expertise or strength is in, uh, coming out of.
Of school.
Even maybe another planning office where they've been working more with, um, historic, um, as a design and so on. Um, so I don't know that this part-time, it doesn't change the numbers at all, but it works.
No, I think, but it does.
Just the description.
Just talk to the justification. It does.
The justification, to me, that's the, to me, I see it over and over again when I get the reviews, and we've actually asked you just to state clearly, so. But I think eventually somebody whose strength can work and also help, um, basically most historical commissions that I know of around the, what, Arlington, whatever, Brooklyn, and so on, Concord, Lexington, they have staff also attending. So this person could staff the historical commission, for example.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we want to add that in, I mean, I, I.
Well, it doesn't change the money.
Doesn't change your money.
Trouble we do the job description.
It just changes the job description. It also changes.
I'm starting to think, wait a sec, folks.
Well, if we, well, I mean, if we need someone that's not.
I didn't want to just be silent.
If we need someone who's a, another paid grade above that, then maybe that's a conversation we could enter into the budget conversation.
Yeah, but. So, um, one of the things after we get done talking about the money, which is coming next, is then we need to prioritize what things are important for short-term, medium-term, and long-term. So why don't we move now to the, to the, um, budget for.
Professional.
Professional.
Um, yeah, so, couple things. So this, so, so we, I just put down all the money that if, if we had everything that we wanted, we would get these three things for the, for these, we would get this much money for these three things.
Okay.
Seventy-five thousand dollars for the master plan, that's not really a recurring, so we, we are short, we are short seventy-five. Yes, we have a hundred thousand in, in the bank.
Oh, I had no idea.
And then we, it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar contract plus co-urbanize and other, and it's, it's about a hundred and seventy.
Okay.
Oh, geez.
So we are short money. We knew that, I, I thought we knew that.
We knew that. I knew that.
So this, the seventy-five K doesn't necessarily actually go in this, in this budget, because it's not a recurring budget item that we're going to need. That was more of a conversation for Lisa when we were talking with her, is that we need to, is the, most likely, this is going to be an appropriation at spring, period.
Yeah, if we'd appropriate.
So that, that seventy-five won't be there.
Budget item, right.
The other two things we've been talking about, and there's some good news here. The good news is that we have somewhere around twenty-nine thousand dollars left in our current budget that is up.
In six thirty.
In June thir- in June thirty. We could do a North Main Street project this fiscal year, period. We can do it. We can just say, we can just say we're not.
Been asking for it.
No, no, what I'm saying is we don't have to shift any money around. We have to not do any other projects with that money.
That's the key point, is we won't have.
Maybe we need ten K for something, I don't know, but, but the point is that there's like thirty, or twenty-nine, eight, or thirty.
But, but, but I know that's a great idea, but that doesn't get us to the budget.
No, well, it's the point is that do we need this thirty thousand for next year for the North Main, or should we just do the thirty thousand that we have?
One of the, one of the questions that came up during our discussion was, Lisa took a look at what we had been spending on consultants, and so.
Not a lot.
Not a lot. So why are you asking for thirty K when it looks like you're only spending, what was the number, seventeen K in FY eighteen? Actual was seventeen K. So why are you asking for twice as much as you've actually used?
We're behind?
Well, that's, that's, that's the right answer, but it needs a little bit more. But the point is, is that we need to justify that money, and so.
I'm saying, well, I'm saying that it's possibly, it's possible that, first of all, we, we wouldn't say that we need thirty thousand for North Main Street for next fiscal year if we are going to be doing it now.
We would, I, I think that it would be wise to set aside some of our existing twenty-nine K in case we run into some design.
Well, we still don't want to run into a situation where, where, where we don't use the money again.
Right, no, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but in a sense, it's still not getting to the budget question, which is, how much money are we going to ask for in our budget? Are we going to ask for thirty-five K again?
I think it would be.
Or we're going to ask for more?
Thirty-five, I think it would be thirty-five for normal run, you know, business, meaning that we should be spending that much money, period. And then an extra fifteen for this on-call design professional, which would be forty-five or fifty total.
The, the other issue, um, which Lisa may not be aware of, is the professional services. We are also carrying it for legal counsel. And so what happened is, is there.
We had a whole bunch of it.
We had a lot of it, and then they picked up art, so then we were able to let that go back into the kitty. Um, but now we have other things, and we already had appropriated the funds for North, um, for the Center Business District and all that. So, um, all, that's why they're seeing, you're seeing that one year where art came on and we had the extra.
Right.
Um, and we had, the Center Business District was under contract and art paid for in prior years.
But we just don't want to have, even if it's a legitimate situation, I don't, I don't want to be left over with twenty-five thousand dollars in our bank.
Understood, but, so, so Heather's talking to her justification.
Yeah.
That's, yes, that's what she needs to understand is what happened.
So we're gonna, we're gonna come up with the justification, and, and this doesn't have to be until January eleventh.
Right.
So we have a couple of weeks to make sure we get all of these points in. But getting back to it, so if we spend thirty K for North Main Street and.
When?
We can certainly start spending it this year. I still would like to have something held back just in case.
For what?
I don't know, that's why.
Because we'd go for fifty-three G.
Well, that's the thing, because at that, because at that point, you take that additional amount, and that's, that's part of your appropriation for the following year.
It doesn't roll over.
We have fifty-three G if an incident comes up.
No, but you could, no, but you could put it in there and say, by the way, we had this money left, or, I mean, you have to be honest with the town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, you ask, you do have to ask. So it's possible to roll over, but you're, it's not necessarily looked highly upon.
Right, yeah, so.
We didn't have a planner. I've gone through the process of encumbering. That's not.
Absolutely, right, you did it.
Well, if, if the majority of the board feels like we can spend all of our cash on North Main Street, then that's fine.
Well, I want to make sure we do, because I saw it or understood it as seed money, um, as, and you said you have spoken to Dennis, you said in the past three weeks or so, he would be available if we wanted to do.
He did not give so much as a commitment to that effect.
Okay.
Right.
I would, I would like us to.
Well, we've got to deal with, if we've got design issues and we've got fifty-three G, uh, out there, my understanding from him was we ought to have, be able to bring the consultant in, and that, you know, so they can get going. Because we've seen how the process works. You get the drawings before you're even ready to have your hearing.
Well, I think, I mean, I, I would like to open this up to more than just Dennis.
I, I'm fine with that.
And I don't know how we do that and have two people on call.
Well, that's an issue.
And that's an issue, so I think we need.
We don't have that much.
We don't.
Depending upon how, how, how wonderful they would want to just have the opportunity to work here.
And, and, and there's also, yeah, I'm still a little confused as to how you say, how the consultant says, well, I'll only do it for thirty K or some set amount of money, but if it's not done over a certain period of time, so you say, okay, great, so.
Like if there's only X amount of reviews, right?
So I'll give you, I'll pay you thirty K in five years, and they'll say, all right, so I don't know how that's supposed to work. Well, that's, that's something Brian, I think, should do, because he speaks the language more than I do. So let's find out, let's, um, so do we want more than thirty K, or are we fine with thirty K, just for general consultants?
Yeah, I mean, I think, what I think, I think erase this North Main Street, and it's, what do we use thirty K for, is that should be running business as usual. We, you know, we dropped ten K with doing the Hyland Ave design review, um, when we asked Dennis to look at, look at that.
Right.
You know, we kind of get stuck with that bill, to be honest, that was, but, um, that was ten K for two and a half weeks' work.
Yeah.
So there was no fifty-three G involved, and how do we know that's not going to happen again? So I think the idea of, I erase this North Main Street and just say thirty K that we need for professional services, we should clearly start using some of this money that we have this year, starting mid-January.
Absolutely.
We should try to get someone under contract.
What I'd like to do, and it's to, if you want to be specific, it's all the better when you're putting in anyway, I'd like to get an urban designer in here, and I don't care if it's not done, I, I mean, I like Dennis, just don't want to confuse that, but I want to get somebody in here. And have some kind of urban design vision that starts with that gateway that looks so lousy and start drawing.
Well, that's what this on-call design professional is. That's not, we're not calling that as professional services.
I'm talking about North Main Street.
Because what we have to do, or, or, we have to go on North Main Street, and we have to deal with some of the zoning right away, right? So whether it's, um, we turn things from special permit, uh, site plan review to special permit, we look at the height.
Correct.
Um, we look at parking, minor changes right now.
So that's the North Main Street project.
Budgetarily, but from a budget perspective, you know, basically, that's sort of two different things. So you've got, you were talking about the additional person, right? And that would not be that, but that would be, that would be something you say, fine, here's a project that you bring to the town meeting under a, under a separate line, and there it is.
That's another way of doing it.
So the stuff.
Well, I mean, I've done a few budgets.
Yeah, yeah, no, um.
For that?
For the zoning stuff, if mostly we're looking at, we review what the CBD zoning is, and I think mostly just see how much we like it. I think.
Well, that's why I thought.
With Brian.
I thought Dennis actually might be the good person, because he's cohesive.
He could be.
Because we're trying.
So, 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 so we can focus back on the budget. So we, we've all agreed that North Main Street will get some sort of a plan with some large chunk of the money we currently have.
Well, that's where I was, why I was going to this, because it doesn't have to be the full zoning, rezoning of GBD two and three at this point. We want to wait actually to the master plan for that. But we do need someone to look at the CBD.
Wait, she's taking that away.
Oh, here, yeah.
And things that we can do to make that, small things we can do. So it wouldn't be all that money at this point. That's what I'm trying to say, is instead of doing a full revamp of GBD two and three, we do certain things that kind of keep it more in line with the CBD at this point until we can get the master plan.
So, what I, yeah, what I would, what I would want to do is have a conversation with Jennifer Goldson.
Yep.
About options, whether it's with them.
No.
As part of his process now.
Yeah.
Or whether it's a different, but I think we need a little bit of direction in terms of what actually needs to happen there. Are we talking about changing zoning? Are we talking about?
Yes, we've got to do it.
Okay, but that's not part of a budget discussion. That's part of a.
Oh, it is. That's what we're talking about.
It is.
But we've already decided we're going to do that.
So.
The question is, are we going?
How much?
Okay, I think I got it. How about that?
Okay, so.
I think I have it. So I think what we are going to do is starting, we're going to start using some of our professional services money after the new year in order to, um, whether it's doing an RFP for a larger contract or just a ten thousand dollar contract. Doing some work related to North Main with input from, with input from Jennifer Goldson.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We will then be asking for thirty thousand dollars for professional services to do the level, to keep us going, actually, or thirty or thirty-five, no, keep it thirty-five, with saying just professional services. Some of that could be North Main Street, some of that could be special projects, and then we ask for fifteen for an on-call design professional for a total of fifty, fifty thousand dollars for professional services, period. for a total of fifty, fifty thousand dollars for professional services, period.
That's the number I want us to get to, okay, so we're done with that.
Okay, sorry that.
That's where we're going.
All I care about is the thirty-five K plus the fifteen K.
But we had to have a plan.
Right.
We're talking about the plan.
I think, I think I'm ready.
Well, we still have to, we were also asked to talk about priorities, so if we have a choice between an, a full-time planner.
So we're back up to, to.
Right.
Positions.
So which one will have the greatest immediate impact, so if it has to get phased in, or we only get one piece of pie instead of two, which piece of pie do we want sooner?
The planner.
The planner.
Over the zoning enforcement officer?
Oh, that's a tough one.
I, I.
I would take the zoning enforcement officer.
I have to say that's not our budget, though, that's the thing.
That's, it's a que- it's a question for the, it's a question for the manager, not necessarily for us, but.
It's not a, the question is.
We were asked to, to say, you have these three things, you have a magic wand, what's priority one, two, and three?
Zoning enforcement, it's just got, we've got it, to me, it's a different prof- um, I hear you say it too, but it's a different, it's a.
A different skillset.
Expertise, yes.
Well, I, I, I have to respectfully disagree, I think we need a planner more than we need a zoning enforcement officer. Well, unfortunately, that Heather left, um, which way do you go on this, Betsy?
The select board's with us, too.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I think frankly, I think some of our zoning enforcement has been weak, and I think we need to shore that up, I really do. Because we do all the work to get the grade zoning done, but then if it's really not getting enforced, that's, that's, that's a genuine issue.
Well, my, my argument for getting a planner is that.
And we're all so tired, you've got three people who sing.
My argument is that in order for us to move forward with anything new in terms of zoning, other than just patching things up, we need someone focusing, and also getting more economic development going, we need someone focused on that. And I think that, that, I guess, is a longer-term plan.
Yeah, because I know.
But if we, all we get out of this is a Z, a half-time Z E O.
It's huge, though, we do all this work and it's tons of work to get to the point where it's passed by the town meeting, two-thirds vote. And then we watch how something crazy like Shore Road plays out, it's just with a, it's a handoff process.
Right.
And the handoff isn't working, and it won't until we get a different profile, a different area of, I'll call it expertise, and there, somebody, the background is completely different.
The other thing that the zoning enforcement officer will do, uh, that currently is not, would be the chaser, right? So if there's conditions, everything put on these permits before the, the building officer.
Yeah.
Will sign off, the zoning enforcement officer has to sign off saying that they met all those criteria, so it's not, it's also including making sure that.
No, I, I under.
Planning, zoning, historical.
No, I, I understand all that, I guess, I'm just, I just.
Well, you've heard us, it's like.
Heather, you've heard me, I've heard you.
And I think it'll free Brian up just a little bit.
I do, too.
At this point, so we get a little bit of two.
Okay, so I guess we're gonna, if we have to rank these things, I think we can all agree that the grant writer comes in for free, and the reason I say not for free, but since it's useful to everyone else in Town Hall.
Yeah.
I don't think we have to make a stronger case for a planner. You can say the next one would be the part-time Z E O. Over my objections, and then the full-time planner. And, um.
Wait a minute, so one would be grant writer, is that what you're saying? Because that's like a no-brainer.
The grant writer is not even, it's just a top.
Well, everyone can benefit.
Everyone can benefit, so that's a no-brainer.
Everybody wins.
Then, then I guess the, you could say the Z E O is next, and then the town planner.
I'm not sure, I'm putting grant writer at number one, I'm letting somebody else carry that bucket.
Yeah.
I put him at three.
Bucket of water.
Yeah, it's something that everybody will use, and, and that, and that's sort of non-rebuttable, and even though it's at the bottom of the list, it's.
Yeah.
Because for ours, if we got a full-time planner, we can always, um, have the full-time planner work on the grant writing.
We're not gonna get a full-time planner, we're gonna get a part-time Z E O, cause they're cheaper.
I'll take it, right now.
Well, we might, we, we, we might get a, we might get a part-time planner.
We might get a part-time Z E O.
I, I have a feeling.
Full-time isn't essential, I would like it.
Yeah, well, I mean, there certainly's been, a lot, there certainly's been a lot of, of talk and, you know, at town meeting, basically looking at comparable communities.
Right.
So it's not out of nowhere that we would get either a half or a full-time planner, a Z E O, people are like, what is that?
Okay, so, so why don't we do it this way?
Actually, I don't, I don't.
People keep asking about zoning enforcement.
I know, people, I know, I, I get, I get, I get so on the phone about it.
So, so I would suggest then we put in half-time Z E O, half-time planner, full-time planner, and then the grant writer is an asterisk.
Yep.
Yeah, asterisk, exactly.
With two being a full-time and three being a half-time planner? First priority is Z E O, for, a part-time Z E O.
Then the next would be a full-time planner.
Right, and then then three would be a part-time planner.
Three would be part-time.
Okay. All right, I think I'm.
I register my objections, but that's been registered. Okay, now, now we have to talk about priorities for money. So we have thirty-five K plus fifteen K, the master plan is a high priority, she knows that, so we'll ask for that as a special appropriation. If we had to ditch, I say thirty-five K is first and fifteen K is second.
Yeah, we gotta have the thirty-five K, we're not getting less than thirty-five K for professional services again.
Yeah, so I don't know that there's much to say, we want both.
We can't.
Fifteen K isn't gonna.
If you had to pick, I would say the thirty-five, because you could obviously use that for an on-call, on-call design professional, and then the other twenty would be for professional services.
Yeah, and I some, still would like to get someone to come in and clean up our zoning, we're processing, but we should talk to Mary Ellen about that.
That's a top-wide issue, though, for a lot of things, a lot of our documents should be up online.
Yeah, but I, ours is personal, cause it's ours, so I really wanna get it done.
But you do take it personally, that's true.
Okay, so I think we've made all the decisions on that, um, so what else is there to do?
There was potential hearing procedures, but I'm not, I'm.
We're not there, I was asked to talk to Art about the hearing procedures, I have not done so.
Did your travel, you have five hundred dollars, we had wanted you to travel outside of state. Five hundred dollars will not cover you in that.
And we're not talking about Connecticut.
I usually go to, there's the Southern New England that's in Rhode Island or whatever, I do that usually once a year, and.
We want you to travel, we want you to go out to San Fran, no, I'm kidding, um, no, we want you to go to one of the big conventions that are nationally.
Yeah, then, I mean, the A P A convention's all over the country every year, so.
So, but the five hundred dollars won't cover it.
We wanted to bump that up to three K.
Okay.
Because there's no way you can go without, I mean, between.
You need your own board and your flight.
Yeah, plus, so that's around three K.
Is that okay with you? But that's part of our review when we talked about things we wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We talked about lots, we have to do a six-month, do we have to re-review you?
No, you don't, fortunately, you don't.
Okay, good, but we need to have a, a six-month review and see, make sure that all those boxes are getting checked.
I am dying, it's three, it's thirty-five, Heather's low.
Your books and periodicals, that won't cover the, the code. It won't cover it.
We, this is our last meeting before the eighth, so we need to get this done.
That won't cover your code, so you need to bump that out.
Yeah, but we're not talking about anything on the seventeenth.
Not on the budget.
Right, so let's, let's, so.
I don't know what the cost of it is off the top of my head, but that, a hundred dollars will not cover the cost to get the current building code.
Okay.
And, um, and then I want, the travel needs to be bumped up, so you can actually go to more of the, um.
Although I will say that if it's a burden for Brian, that there are certainly New England conferences or New York or whatever.
I don't think they are a burden for him, I think it's just not budgeted for, it's, that's what you just said.
If we put it in the budget, Brian will.
You put it in the budget, then, then.
Brian will, Brian will either use it or not, and if he doesn't use it, then it's a burden.
They will take it out, but.
So we, we bumped the travel to three K, we bumped the, um, books and periodicals to how much? Five K?
No, no.
No, it's a hundred right now, but.
It's a hundred, but the building code that you're talking about's like two fifty or something?
Yeah, okay.
It's like three hundred. Let's say three hundred.
So bump it up to four fifty. Cause you, obviously you're spending something on your building, you spent two hundred and twenty in twenty eighteen.
I don't know why about that, I'll have to look at that.
Probably bought a phone book. Okay, um, and I think the rest is pretty much it.
Nothing really there.
Uh, Brian and I talked about if we actually got a new, another body in the office, whether we'd have, and all of those expenses in terms of, um, computers and all that other stuff, except for phone are covered by the town.
I T, yeah.
Okay.
So we would only have to get a new phone in.
Okay, that's not too bad.
And that's three hundred K, so that's not a big deal.
Yeah.
So I guess that's it for the, for the budget, so, um, to, to follow up on this, uh, so Heather and Brian, you're gonna talk about the benefits of a Z E O.
Yeah.
Brian, you, can you put together a memo on the budget by, let's, if I say next Friday? So we could, you could circulate it to the board, and then we can take a look at it, and we just need to get it out, um, to the town manager by the eleventh, but if we got it there sooner, I don't think that would be.
Yep, other thing with a Z E O is, um, when they don't meet the requirements, then the town has to come in and pay for it. So if they don't put the curbs in, we're paying for the curbs to come in, if they don't.
Yeah, I, I mentioned that in our discussion, cause it happened near me, so, yeah.
Yeah.
And that was an aha moment, I believe.
The D B W's paying for a lot of.
Or they just don't put it in.
Or it's a safety issue.
They don't put it in near me.
A memo about the budget in terms of priorities and all of this, right?
Yeah, essentially, we wanna have the final thing that we would, something that looks like the final thing we would give Lisa.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, you're saying by next Friday.
Yeah, if, if you can't do that, I mean, we're not, we don't need it.
Do we need to vote this in?
Not yet.
I mean, I just, you can, you can, you can just take it, you can just take a look at the town, at the town meeting book, and they'll, cause those reflect the recommendations that are getting made by the finance committee.
Right.
Okay.
Which town meeting pays attention to when they want to and ignores when they want to?
Town meeting is fine, the finance committees, where they actually.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying that town meeting ignores the finance committee when it's politically okay to, and then says, oh, but they said so when they want to. Anyway, I think we are done with our agenda for this evening, is there a motion to retire?
There's a motion to adjourn.
Heather makes, Betsy made a motion, Heather will second, let's just say, all in favor?
Aye.
And we're out of here.
I don't think anyone's gonna oppose this one.
Okay, so, okay.
Joined, um, that housing meeting at the library started at six.
Heather, or Betsy, Betsy moved for adjournment, Heather seconded.
The one that, um.
Motion.
I guess that's a review, but the Alan Rogers has been organized. I don't create a vehicle for the town to get.
Oh, so you've got a meeting since six? No, I know, I just.
Housing Corporation meeting was pretty interesting.
Cub Scout.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, it was pretty good.